Good to go.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Conference of February 23rd, 2021. We have two items on the agenda tonight, and the first is an update on the FYE 2021 Capital Improvements Budget and discussion regarding the FYE 2022 Capital Improvements Budget. I'd like to recognize Anthony Francisco, our Finance Director, to make a presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I was just starting to get confident in my ability with the old Zoom system, and now they've changed it again, so hopefully this share screen will work. Okay, um, does everybody have on their screen just the title slide? Or do you also see what is going to be the next slide that I'm hovering over right now?
We also see the next slide.
Okay. How about now?
Full screen, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, um, we are in the next step of the budget process for fiscal year 2021, 2022. And we are combining the mid-year budget review that would have normally been held at the February or January Finance Committee meetings. So we're covering a few topics at the same time, but the main topic is the capital improvement budget. We will start, however, with the, um, with the rainy, with the mid-year budget review. So if I can change. Okay, does everybody now see a fund summary for the general fund? Does everybody see that?
We still see just the title, just the title page.
I can see it, Anthony, did you put it into?
I'm in Excel now, you should see a general fund fund summary.
Okay, you need to share, you need to switch screens and share the other screen, you're sharing your PowerPoint. If you go down to share and kind of hover over it, you should see both of those documents.
Do I just close out of it?
No, just, there should be an option to stop sharing. And then switch to the other one you want to share. There you go.
Okay. As you see here, we have in column B, the adopted budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. And in fiscal, in column C, we have updated the revenue estimates based on our actual revenue experience as of the end of January. The overall message that I would take from this on the revenue side is that it's not as bad as we had feared, but it's not good. So what you see here is that our sales tax revenues are just kind of right on budget. They're about one half of 1% above budget. Our use tax revenues are quite a bit above budget. So we expect to bring in about $2 million more than budgeted in use tax revenues. But our franchise fee revenues as of the end of January were way down below budget. But the, I think, I think Darryl calls it Blizzard Maggedon or something.
Snow Maggedon.
Yeah, that's gonna have a really good impact on our ONG franchise revenues. Now, that doesn't show up yet, but I would suspect that that's gonna improve our franchise fee revenues by in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, so it was a tough thing to get through, but at least for that one thing, there is a positive outcome of snow getting. As you see, our fine and forfeiture revenues are way below budget and continuing to come in even below where they were last year, so that's a bad thing. The other revenue that you see here, this is misleading because this is where we are recording all of the CARES Act revenues that we have gotten. Our regular other revenue sources are pretty much right on budget. But just understand that that is a misleading thing, and you really should kind of subtract out about $10 million from that. Licenses and permits are slightly below budget, kind of flat from where they were last year. One thing I would point out, and I know that we have some folks who are looking at these fund summaries for the first time, but I would point out that this revenue source for capital outlay transfers from the capital fund is just a wash, it's a money in and money out, where the capital fund is paying for those capital outlay items that are being accounted for in the general fund. And we'll talk about that somewhat more as we progress into the capital budget presentation. You see here in the service and maintenance category, that's where that money is being spent down from the CARES Act expenditures for the most part, so again, that's kind of a wash. All those things taken together, we do expect this year, for the first time in quite a while, that we are going to have to spend our 1% emergency reserve, and we've already moved a lot of that money into the street maintenance budget in the Public Works Department. But all of those things taken together, we think we are going to end this fiscal year with a drawdown of about $1.2 million of our beginning fund balance. And we will close this fiscal year if everything that we're projecting comes to pass with an ending fund balance of about $2.7 million. Now, um, that is of, below our projected reserve of 3%. And again, that is of concern. We will continue to try to mitigate for all of those things, but we would close this fiscal year below our reserve policies. And that would be what we would carry forward into next fiscal year. So the bottom line and takeaway from that is that our general fund is surviving, but is not in a really great shape to add a whole lot of new things. And, and just know that we don't project, at least in here, that we would draw down any of our rainy day fund balance to bail out the general fund because the general fund balance is still above 1% of expenditures. But again, it is below the 3% mandated operating reserve level. If there's any questions as I'm going along, feel free to stop me and ask them. I'm gonna move along then to the rainy day fund and just touch on quickly the $135,000 deposit that we made to the rainy day fund that was from CARES Act revenues. It was intended to bring us to our targeted level of rainy day fund balance. But again, the rainy day fund balance is affected by those CARES Act expenditures, so the required rainy day fund balance goes up. So we are still below our 5% targeted rainy day fund balance, but we are in excess of our minimum rainy day fund balance. And so we feel pretty good about where we are in the rainy day fund balance. If we had to draw on our rainy day fund reserves to help out with general fund expenditures, we would be in a position to do so. I will just remind council, however, that any, any appropriations that you make out of the rainy day fund balance have to be refunded, at least to that minimum level within three years. Moving on to the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund, again, you see that our sales tax projected revenues are right on budget for the PSST fund, and use tax revenues are above budget in that fund. We are projecting at this time that we will have to subsidize the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund from the general fund of about $2.7 million. At that level, the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund would have a closing fund balance of about $430,000. And that would reduce the amount of subsidy from the general fund because again, the target is to subsidize the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund to a level that the fund balance is zero. So this inter-fund transfer from the general fund would be reduced by that $430,000, and it would only be about $2.3 million. But the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund does not meet its projected expenditures. I'll move along then to the Room Tax Fund, which we, back in September when we were discussing this, we were very concerned about the, the status of the Room Tax Fund, such that the council made appropriations from the CARES Act funds that we received to kind of subsidize and, and bring the Room Tax Fund back to where it would have been, basically if there had been no COVID impact. So we, we are able to, in this fiscal year, bring the expenditures from the Convention and Visitors Bureau and from the Arts and Humanities Council back to where they would have been, restore the Room Tax Fund balance to a zero level. But again, we have ongoing concerns about the Room Tax Fund in fiscal year 22. The closing fund balance for this fund of $194,000 is totally from the parks portion. You'll, and, and as we say, the, the Arts and Humanities portion and the Convention and Visitors portion is only at zero, so they have no fund balance, which is in violation of their mandated reserve. We are projecting that the Room Tax Revenue for next fiscal year will be below where we budgeted for it to be this fiscal year and about at the level that it actually was last fiscal year. And again, we started to see some negative impacts of the COVID effect during fiscal year 2019, 2020. So that is about a level, 1.3 million is about a level of about 75% of where you would think the Room Tax Fund revenues would be if there were no COVID impact. But we are hoping that we will start to recover during the course of next fiscal year. We are projecting that we will have full football field, football stands during the fall of 2021 football season, which we project to be a national championship season. And, and, and again, we hope that that will have some positive impacts on our Room Tax Fund. And then finally, I'll touch quickly on the capital fund, which, which is our major fund of emphasis this evening. You see that we started this fiscal year with a very healthy fund balance, yes? Is that a question?
No, go ahead, Anthony.
Okay. We started this fiscal year with a very healthy fund balance in that fund, but again, that is obligated in large extent to capital projects and general obligation bond revenues that have dedicated sources that we have to give those funds for. So as we go along in this fiscal year, the first thing that I would point out is the bond proceeds that were recorded this fiscal year for the municipal complex renovations. And then next fiscal year, we are projecting that we would, that we would issue the next batch of transportation, general obligation bonds that were authorized by the voters in 2019. So if all of those things come to pass and we spend down all of those funds, and of course, we will never be exactly where we project to be, but if all of those things come to pass, we would, we would end this fiscal year with a dangerously low fund balance of, of $805,000. We would have a negative available for new projects in this fiscal year of $650,000, and a negative available for new projects next fiscal year of $471,000. Now, what that means basically is that if council wants to add any projects above and beyond what we are already projecting to do or proposing to do, as we'll talk about that as we go on this evening, then you're going to have to give up some other projects to save some money to pay for the project that you would like to add. So just keep that in mind as you're going along this evening. And then in the next fiscal year 22, we would have $1.47 million, or 23 rather, available for new projects. If there are no other questions, I will move back to hopefully the PowerPoint presentation.
We're not seeing any, Anthony. But wait a minute, Councilmember Holman has a question.
Yeah, thank you. On the PSST, the, how much is the increase in subsidy proposed in this one? So 2.3 million compared to last year? Seems by growth about a million, a million more dollars this year than last year.
Yes, sir, that's, that's roughly correct.
And so, you know, we've talked about how it was anticipated that, that the general fund would subsidize some of the PSST in the future, and by now, since it was first voted on. But what do we think is the growth of this subsidy going to be? A million dollars a year seems unsustainable perhaps to me, but I don't know, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, again, that will depend, of course, on first, the positions that might be added that were included in the Public Safety Sales Tax ordinance. When it was approved, we obligated to add another two communication officer positions and four school resource officer positions that have not been added to the budget yet. But the other thing that is the most important is that on an ongoing basis, the rate of growth in the personnel expenses in the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund far outweighs the rate of growth from the sales tax source that is paying for it. And that is what causes the long-term and ongoing problem, then necessitates a subsidy from the general fund. We knew that would be the case, as Councilmember Holman says, when we passed the Public Safety Sales Tax. But it has certainly been worse than we thought it would be, and we thought that the general fund would be in a better position to absorb those expenses than it is currently.
Appreciate the clarification, Anthony, thanks.
Okay.
We may have had one more, just a moment, Anthony.
I want to ask what's on full screen right now, though.
It's your PowerPoint.
Okay, good.
Okay, I'm not seeing any, never mind, go ahead.
Are we full screen with the PowerPoint now?
Yes.
The first thing that we want to touch on as we continue the mid-year budget review is a discussion, just briefly, of the outside agency request that we have for fiscal year 22. What you see here is these agencies that have been by council direction receiving revenues from the general fund to those outside agencies. And the question to council would be, do you want to continue paying for these outside agency programs out of the general fund? And do you want to do that at the requested level for fiscal year 22? The only one of the outside agencies that has really requested an increase to their funding from where it was in fiscal year 21 is the Social and Voluntary Service Agencies. The Social and Voluntary Service Commission, kind of similar to what the Arts Council does, makes subgrants to several subgrant agencies for various programs that provide services to individuals and agencies that benefit our local citizenry. So the question to council is, do you want to provide this request at last year's budget level or at the requested budget level? And the same question for all of these other outside agencies.
Nobody has reached a hand, Anthony, go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mayor has something to say.
I was just gonna jump in and share my support for that. Our agencies have helped a lot of people out during this tough time, and I would appreciate being able to budget to support them as we all try and recover. And I, my next question would be, if we get more CARES Act funding, would we be able to adjust the budget back to a lower amount, hoping that the agencies served by the Social and Voluntary Services Commission will receive funding that way?
That's certainly one thing that you could do. Remember that what we're discussing here is what would be included in the city manager's proposed budget. So if between now and the time the city manager's proposed budget comes out, we, we were to get more CARES Act funding that could be used to offset some of these costs, then the city manager's budget could be reduced to the level that you might want it to be, whether it is at the previous level amount or something less than that. So yes, there's time to make that decision as we go forward in the budget process. Right now, we're just asking what you want to have in the city manager's budget.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holman?
Yeah, thank you. So I do support keeping them at the levels they are right now, at least. But I am interested potentially, I'm kind of interested in seeing some comparables, if any other cities like Norman, what they spend on this type of stuff, and where we are compared to that. Like with the economic developments, I mean, I've heard we, we don't spend even close to what other cities our size do, but I'd like to know that maybe, and what other cities might spend on social and voluntary services. Center for Children and Families, if a lot of folks may not remember, the city took over funding that when, a couple of years ago, when the county commissioners decided to eliminate county support of that program, so the city took it on. And then, uh, I don't know if other cities have a firehouse, art center, or historical museum, or senior theater type setup, but I would be interested in seeing some information about how we compare to other cities like Norman in these, when it comes to this type of funding, thank you.
Councilmember Holman, we'll send out a request to the Oklahoma Municipal League tomorrow. And they usually give us a pretty speedy turnaround from our neighboring agencies. And I think we'll be able to line it up as, as percentages of the size of the general fund to make it apples and apples. So happy to do that for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that's the one thing I would point out is that a lot of these agencies get funding from other sources. This is just what the general fund is budgeting. So I know that a lot of the Social and Voluntary Services Agencies are United Way organizations, for example. A lot of, you know, Firehous Museum, the Historic Museum, and the Senior Theater are city-owned, basically recreational or park facilities. And, and certainly, most cities of our size own such facilities as that. But the general fund may or may not be supporting the operations or the salaries of those organizations to the level that we are, so we can certainly look into that.
Councilmember Nash?
Yes, I'm seeing some of these, uh, agencies are kind of off a bit on their actual budgets from what they requested. And wondering how conservative should we be when, with, for example, the, uh, Norman Economic Development Council, the first year they're on target, but then this 2021, the actual today, which, I accept, it's kind of, it's, isn't over yet, but it's still 20% under. Of course, the most significant being the aging services, you know, 2,800, 738, so maybe about 1,100, but requesting a $14,000 budget. Now, I don't want to get in the habit of decreasing their budget every time they don't hit their request because then they're gonna find excuses to, to spend it when they don't need to, but is, are these?
There's, there's kind of a different answer for each of those questions that you posed. As it relates to the Kiwanis Cruiser, we are just paying from the general fund to maintain that van. And so if they don't have any major repairs, they don't have any major expenses in a given year. But in some years, that 14,500 is not enough. That's kind of an average. It, it depends on how much gas they use and how much it costs to maintain that, that van. On the Norman Economic Development Council, that's just a monthly payment that we made to them. So as the year goes along, we will have expended that $425,000.
Okay, and should be alarmed that the, the transit has gone over by about 100% for, well, for 2020?
Yeah, that was an intentional direction by council at the time that, that the city of Norman took over the public transit operation within the city. And you'll see there that it does not show up as an outside agency request anymore for that reason. It's now a city operation, and there is a subsidy from the general fund to the public transit fund that is about that $1,135,000.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Anthony.
So shifting gears and moving now into the discussion of the capital budget, both for this fiscal year and proposed for next fiscal year's budget. As you know, this is a year-round budgeting process. We started with, um, budget retreat for the capital budget in November. Council gave us direction at that time, for example, that you directed that we stopped having that capital fund reserve for the I-35 and Robinson Crossroads Project and for the senior center because those projects had been funded outside of the capital fund. And so those funds have now been freed up within the capital fund. Now we're moving on to the mid-year budget review and the discussion of these new projects for the capital fund. Once we get direction on what council wants to do related to the capital fund, we will move forward with the city manager's proposed capital budget that will be presented to you in a study session on May the 4th. I know that we have some viewers who may not be familiar with the background and policies related to the capital fund, so I'll just go through those really quickly. By net, by definition, a capital project supports the services of municipal government. The projects in our CIP The projects in our CIP plan are erected by long-range master plans and reviewed by the citizens. Things like the transportation plan, the park and recreation master plan, the strategic water supply plan, and what have you. The priorities are set both for the short range and the long range. There is a one-year capital budget that is an actual appropriated budget and a five-year capital plan. Once the, once the council adopts the one-year budget, it is an ordinance adopted law, but the plan can be changed at any time in the future as we go forward into that five-year plan. But because capital projects have a long-term horizon, in many cases, a capital project can take two, three, four, or five years to complete. We make that long-range plan within our capital budget process. There are a couple of major sources of funding for our capital budget. We have the 0.7% capital sales tax. And no, I can't resist pointing out that that's not a capital penny. There's no such thing.
Every time, every time.
I can't resist. It is a 0.7% capital sales tax, and it was approved by voters for the purposes of capital projects and capital facilities. Also accounted for in the capital fund are voter-approved general obligation bonds. We account for projects from some other sources within our capital program, including the 0.5% Norman Forward Sales Tax. There are several capital projects in the Public Safety Sales Tax. We have TIF revenues that are part of our capital program. And we have intergovernmental grants that are usually a fairly small part of our capital program, but this year, it's a fairly significant part of our capital program. So by definition, what is a capital project? It's a project that has a cost generally more than $100,000. These are fixed assets, things that are tangible. Things like bridges and streets and buildings, those things that you can touch, and those things that have a useful life of usually five years or more. That is different from capital outlay, and a lot of times those two things get confused because there are capital outlay items within our capital program. But a capital outlay item by definition has an expected life that's shorter, usually between one and five years. These are usually tangible things, but they have a shorter useful life, things like furniture and fixtures and equipment and vehicle. Those are what we would define to be capital outlay items. Here's a list of all the funds that are included in the capital program. And as you see, they are, they are varied. There are many of them. But the two, but the major ones are that, that capital sales tax and general obligation bonds. Also included in our capital program, although we'll not touch on them tonight to a large extent, are our enterprise funds, which unlike the general fund, which is driven by operating costs in the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund, which expenditures are driven by operating costs, the enterprise funds are really driven by capital costs. And so we'll have a lot of discussion about those when we have our enterprise fund budget discussion with the council in a future study session. But just know that that is a major part of our capital program. All of those revenue sources taken together, you see that again, the largest source of revenue for our capital program in this year are general obligation bonds. And that is a bit unusual, but again, we have that large transportation bond program that is included in our capital program for this fiscal year. The user fee piece of the pie that you see here, that is primarily for our enterprise areas, and they are paid for totally by the users of those utility enterprises. The 0.7% capital sales tax makes up about 20% of our capital program this fiscal year. And again, the other sources that we talked about are smaller pieces of the pie, but certainly no, no less important. On the expenditure side, where that money is going in our capital program are largely for building and ground improvements, particularly related to the Norman Forward Program. The Park and Recreation Program is driven by Norman Ford as well. And those transportation improvement programs that we've talked about, those street widening projects and street maintenance projects that you're gonna see are in that piece of the pie. The Capital Improvement Fund was established in 1976. We talked about that 7/10 of 1% sales tax. And we talked about that the enterprise funds are funded with fee charges to the users of those utility enterprises. When council adopts the capital budget, you adopt where you're going to spend those revenues. But for the capital sales tax, you have established guidelines for how we would include those expenditures in the city manager's proposed budget. So about 27% of that capital sales tax goes toward capital outlay items, like computer replacements and vehicle replacements, those capital outlay items that we talked about. 25% goes towards street maintenance. 36% goes toward other projects that we'll talk about and debt service on those general obligation bonds and other facilities. So the status of the capital fund, as we looked at very briefly when we looked at the fund summary for the capital fund, you see that we have available for new projects of a negative $650,000, and that is unusual. Usually, we, when we're at this step in the capital budgeting process, council has some available funds to allocate toward new projects. But the status of the fund is such right now that we are in a negative position. So if you want to add any projects this fiscal year or into next fiscal year, you will have to give up some other project, and just keep that in mind. Here's a list of some of the projects that are underway right now. That transit program, where we're building the new transit maintenance facility and the park maintenance facility. And if you drive up flood, you'll see that they are making very rapid progress, but that's an eight and a half million dollar project from a variety of sources, including federal funds through the CARES Act. The TMDL studies, Total Mass Daily Load Studies, are ongoing, and they are paid for from the capital program. Another large program is the 24th Avenue East Bond Project that is nearing completion, and we'll have some more information about that later. The Porter Avenue and Acre Street Intersection Project, a major pain in the butt for those of us who drive in the area right now. But you have to think about it as it will be in about six months from now, when that project is complete. And great progress is being made on that project right now. It's about a $3.7 million project. We are under construction with municipal complex renovation. We had to delay the wall breaking that council was gonna participate in because of the weather and some other things, but that'll be coming up really quickly, where you'll go over to the former Norman Public Library Building and formally start the process of that renovation into our new one-stop-shop development center. The 36th Avenue Northwest Project is under construction from the standpoint that we are relocating utilities and acquiring rights of way. Sean will have some information about some hesitancy from property owners in dedicating that right of way. But just know that that is an ongoing project, and we have some challenges related to that project. We touched on the I-35 and Robinson Street Crossroads West Side Project that is about to start construction. That is a federally funded project with a local match from the University of North Park to fund. Just looking at a few projects from a visual standpoint, and any of the project managers can chime in here and respond to questions that may come up. But these are related to our five-year street maintenance bond program, projects that have been completed. And again, when those projects are done, they make major improvements to those neighborhood streets where folks actually live and where folks actually drive. And as you know, this program that was approved most recently in 2016 is a five-year general obligation bond, is up for renewal in April. This hopefully will be the fourth time that our voters have renewed this program so that we can continue these vital projects.
Anthony, I believe you have a question or statement from Councilmember Holman?
Yes, just, thank you. It doesn't have to be answered tonight, but on the 36th Avenue Northwest Project, I would like some information for the council on, I've been kinda wondering and had some questions about it regarding why this project is costing so much more than the 24th Avenue East Project, that, you know, is also a two-mile stretch and has some challenging terrain issues that had to be, you know, designed around. And so why is the 36th Avenue Project, which seems like it might be more of a straight shot, maybe not, but why is it so much more expensive? I think, I'm very well aware of why it's taken so long to get going and the federal funding and everything, but the cost difference, given the challenges we have with funding towards it, I think is just some useful information for the council going forward. So, thank you.
Yeah, we'll have a slide about that particular project here in a few minutes, but, and I'll turn to Sean or to Scott starts to talk about that in a dress your question.
Thank you.
This is a breakdown of that five-year maintenance program that we're just about to complete of about $25 million. And again, it was approved in 2016. The proposal that is before the voters in April of this year is about a $27 million project. And again, because the property value of Norman has gone up a little bit, we can do a little more projects for the same amount of tax levy. So again, it's not a proposed increase to taxes, but we will be able to continue this program at its current level and a little bit above. Okay, so this kind of talks about what Councilmember Holman was asking about. And again, I'm not the engineer who can address that question directly. But here is the 24th Avenue Project. Again, it is nearing completion. It did have some challenges topographically and those sorts of things, but those things have been addressed, so. If Sean has anything to add or Scott starts, feel free.
Thank you, Anthony. I'll try to, maybe try to address Councilmember Holman's question. Appreciate the question, Councilmember. First, I'll just note that the 24th Avenue Northeast Project or Southeast Project, whichever, whichever mile you're looking at there, is coming in at about $15 million in the end. So now we know exactly where we are. We reconciled most of that project account. And that's different than 36th Avenue Northwest, where we are still now just estimating. So that might be part of that difference. So 15 million versus about 17 million right now that we're estimating for the 36th Avenue Northwest Project. The other difference, I would say, and you can see on this slide, is two major intersections. We had less major intersections or fewer major intersections on the 24th Avenue Project because Lindsay was already complete and Robinson was partially complete. In this case, we've got a multi-lane intersection on Franklin at 36 and a multi, multi-multi-lane intersection at Indian Hills on 36. Just for that perspective, these are gonna be eight-lane intersections when they're completed with this project. So that's probably the majority of our, of the differences in our estimates. But again, those are just estimates on 36, whereas we've got real numbers on 24.
Appreciate that information, Sean. Thank you.
Next project that we'll talk about is the I-35 and Robinson Street on the West Side Project that is about to start construction. Once it has been completed, the traffic problems will have been relieved to a great extent, but certainly not solved. But we believe that it's about a 10-year solution, and certainly will make things better than they are right now. It's basically moving the intersection of crossroads back about a third of a mile to the east and making a cul-de-sac here where you used to have an intersection there. So that will relieve a lot of the traffic burden. Highway 9 is an ongoing project that we are in with the State Transportation Department. Multiple projects doing multiple things. Bike lanes, widening, intersection projects, drainage projects, all of those things related to Highway 9 have been done over the last three to five years and will be ongoing for the next three to five years. But again, for example, this Fave 6 Project is a $35 million project that will go all the way to the east city limit of Norman and past it to Tecumseh. So, so again, the state of Oklahoma has a major investment in Norman on its Highway 9.
Anthony, if I may, I wanna mention for the council, there's a red box around Page 4. That project, we have learned in recent days, has now received bids by ODOT, actually last Thursday. They are working on the evaluation of those bids. They have three excellent bids. It's in the range of 15 to 16 million dollars in construction. It is a three-mile section of widening, so it'll look very similar to the previous three-mile section between 36 and 72nd, and this one will pick up at 72nd and go another three miles east to 108. So that project, weather permitting, probably will be under construction in late spring of this year. That'll be a, that'll be a messy project. It's always difficult when you're reconstructing the entire highway there. But about a year after they start, they'll have that widen the four lanes, improve intersections, improve groundwater systems, that sort of thing. So another major step in getting ourselves to the east end of the Norman city limits with an improved state Highway 9. This, the planning for this project started 20 years ago, so it's taken a long time to get to where we are, but we're thrilled with the progress that ODOT has made.
Here is a depiction of that Porter and Acres Intersection Project that's under construction right now and what it will look like once it's complete. Sorry to use the pain in the butt language, Sean, but I just drove it yesterday, and it's caught in a bit of a traffic jam.
I agree with you.
An adjoining project is the Porter Avenue Streetscape Project that's funded by the 2019 General Obligation Bond Program and has some matching federal funds. It will start later this fall, and it'll take about a year to complete. But it will improve the environment. But it will improve the environment along Porter substantially.
Anthony, I believe you have a comment from Councilmember Holman.
Yeah, Anthony, if you could briefly, could you go back to the Highway nine picture? So I just want it for new council members and anybody else, but specifically this impacts Ward Two and Ward Seven and part of Ward One and Five. But the Highway nine, I thirty-five to East Twenty-Fourth Avenue project to widen it to six lanes from its current four lanes has been, you know, I've seen this map every year that I've been on council and it has always said unfunded. But I've been telling people about this project being in the future for Norman at some point, especially residents in my ward. So I see that it's still unfunded, which to me says it's at least another decade out from actually happening. But for soon-to-be Councilmember McGary and other Ward Two council members and other past and future Ward Seven, Ward One and Ward Five council members, I think it's an important project to be aware of and that will be coming sometime in the future. So, thank you.
The James Garner project from where we have made improvements at the Acres intersection up to where it will intersect with Flood Avenue is about to start construction in the fall. This project is funded primarily from Norman Forward with federal matching funds. But it will be a major new entryway to downtown and relieve a lot of the burden on flood that exists right now. It's been in the planning for a long time, but we're about to start to get there. The Jenkins Avenue project in South Central Norman. We're expecting to take bids in about a year. We have about completed the right-of-way acquisition for that project. Obviously, the city is the major landowner there at Reeves Park. But you see the configuration of that project and the important difference will be this connection with Imhoff in Constitution Street that does not exist now. That will open up additional land for Reeves Park. So here is a depiction of that twenty-twelve transportation bond issue that we talked about that includes the Thirty-Sixth Avenue project and where it stands now. You see where the city share has actually come out to be for a lot of those projects as they relate to the matching between the city's portion of the project and the federal matching portion of the project. But we have experienced a major change in that matching formula. And that is what has changed some decisions that may be recommended to council about the timing of the Alameda Project and Thirty-Sixth Avenue Project. And that's what you see depicted here, basically moving up the timing of the Alameda Project and moving back on the timing of the Thirty-Sixth Avenue Project. Did I misspeak anything there, Sean?
No, you're right on point, Anthony. We just mentioned that, you know, the eight projects, we are hoping to finish that seventh one Alameda here this year with another combination of in-house funding. That too is not generating much ability to get the federal funding either. So as Anthony said, our, our big challenge here is going forward is the Thirty-Sixth Avenue Northwest project and how we're going to come up with about eleven and a half million dollars in additional funding to augment the bond fund.
Here's the same sort of depiction of the twenty-nineteen Transportation Bond Program. Again, we are confronting some differences in the formula for matching federal money with our local general obligation bond money for those projects because basically the rules of those, that federal match has changed. So we will adapt as best we can. And we will deliver the projects that were promised to the voters, but we may have to change the timing somewhat. And we may have to change some of the configurations of some of the projects somewhat. All those things taken together, we have had great success with obtaining federal funds for our capital program, and that's depicted here. Both in prior years, we did have a bit of a downturn in fiscal year twenty. But in our future three to five years, we, we expect to get a lot of federal matching funds. And this is separate and apart from anything that may come from CARESAC funds and earmarks and that sort of thing. This is just for our transportation program under the new regulations related to that matching program.
I'll mention if I might, Anthony, that again, the yellow bars represent the planning process at ACOG. But for the first time in all of these years, they are officially locking in two years instead of just the first one. So we are locked in on that FY, FFY twenty-twenty-two. And twenty-twenty-three did really well this year in twenty-two. But the twenty-four and twenty-five years are going to have to be reevaluated and will have to recompete. So I wouldn't bank on those twelve and thirteen million dollar numbers. We're going to do our best to deliver on those. But it's always a new ballgame when, when the competition begins in Oklahoma City and Edmond and Midwest City and all the other cities start to sharpen their pencils.
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. On the twenty-twelve transportation bonds, if Sean, if you wouldn't mind, or Anthony, whichever one, which projects have come in under budget or over? And because we feel like we constantly have to explain this, the Lindsay Street issue, why it went so much over budget and all that. So for our new council members and people watching at home, if you wouldn't mind explaining briefly how the situation with Lindsay Street from Twenty-Fourth to Berry? And then what other projects in this program have maybe come in under budget?
Sure, I'd be happy to, Councilmember. Great question. First, you can kind of see the numbers on the screen. The bond budget is what we started with in terms of our local share, I think, is what that is intended to. No, that's the total amount there. And then the actual cost, you can see of the, of the six projects completed, and then the city share. Generally speaking, although the total cost might be over on the project, I'll take the West Main Street Bridge as an example. In that case, and in all of the other cases except Lindsay Street, the city made up the additional cost of the project in additional federal funds or utility funds or that sort of thing. So the only project that has actually exceeded our bond amount share is the Lindsay Street project. And that was obviously a very big project. It was always the biggest of the, of the group. Originally estimated about thirty-three million, came in about forty-two million. And Councilmember Holman mentioned that the big difference or the big impact there had to do with the stormwater system. We used to joke about that project, that it was a stormwater system with a street on top because it was the most expensive stormwater system we've ever built in Norman. Underground pipeline starting literally at the Berry and Lindsay intersection and going all the way to the Canadian River. But in the original estimates, the, the, the concept was to discharge that underground stormwater pipeline or box culvert is really what it is, directly into the I thirty-five right-of-way just south of Lindsay Street there. But when we got started on the project, the Department of Transportation denied our request to do that. They wouldn't let us discharge that stormwater pipeline into that right-of-way, which caused us to take that box another mile, over a mile actually, south in order to get that discharged. And that made up the majority of that difference. There was also some additional, also some additional right-of-way costs and other, other utility-related costs and burying the, the power lines there. But the majority of the difference was in that, that stormwater system and the, and the additional pipeline that we had to construct. Had no choice, we felt. The council was well aware of those decisions as we were making them. And we did our best to keep those, those costs contained. But good news there, we did receive more federal funds than we had planned. So some of that difference was made up in the federal dollars. But that was the one that, that really shot the budget and certainly impacted our bond balance as well.
Appreciate the explanation on that, Sean. Like I said, I think it, get that question a lot online and especially those that might be seeing the budget here and wonder why it's ten million dollar over it looks like. But I appreciate you explaining that story every time I ask.
Councilmember Peacock.
Thanks. Can you go back to the ACOG slide? Yeah, that one right there. Could you speak, I'm sorry, the one, the previous one, the graph, bar graph?
Is this the one, sir?
No, it's the, that one right there. Yeah, that one right there. Can you just speak to this disparity between twenty-two and twenty-three? Was there any rationale or logic behind why we got substantially less in twenty-three?
Sure, be happy to, Councilmember Peacock. Again, it's a competition. We are competing with thirty-nine other local government entities in the metropolitan Oklahoma City area. So that's part of the answer is that those entities, Oklahoma City, Edmond and others, had higher ranking projects than, than we did. We did really well in year one or this year, twenty-two, which actually will begin on, in October of this year. And that's just because we, we teed up some really good projects. We're learning this new ranking and rating system that's only two years old here at ACOG. So all of us are having to relearn and reevaluate which projects rank better than other projects. And we teed up all of our, all of our best candidates in, in year two. They just didn't compete as well with some projects. If I'm, if memory serves, there were some projects in Edmond and Oklahoma City and Midwest City that, that took the dollars just by virtue of ranking of the project. So we'll go back to the drawing board next year. And again, the, the change in the process is that they are now locking in two years. Instead of one, we used to be able to go back every year and recompete. Now we won't be able to recompete except for that third year. So next year, we'll, we'll go back to the, the application table and we'll compete for that FY twenty-twenty-four.
Thanks for that. And yeah, I know you don't have a crystal ball or anything, but how do you think we stack up for twenty-four and twenty-five? Do the projects coming down the pipe for those years seem to be competitive?
Yeah, you know, the Norman does something different than every other community in, in the metropolitan area. And that is that we have past bond issues that allow us to have the local funding to advance projects. Most cities don't do that. They're, they're going for one project at a time, usually with local dollars. Oklahoma City does that, but they don't do it as competitively in, in this program as we do. So the good news there is we have lots of projects to bring forward in the application process. The trick is now finding those projects that are going to rank better than the others. For instance, this year, in the FY twenty-two year, the Porter Corridor project was one of the top-ranked projects in the metropolitan area, and it wasn't even on the radar for us two years ago. We figured out that it, it had so many of the elements that would score well, so we advanced it in our applications. And sure enough, it won the day. So the good news is we have lots of projects to pick from. We'll have lots of discussions with council this year on which projects are most important to you, and we'll try to tee those up in our, in our application for that FY twenty-four year. The bad news is that the Thirty-Sixth Avenue Northwest project, which is by far our top priority, is the only project we will not have been able to complete in the twenty-twelve bond program, is just not ranking well. Without boring you all, there's just lots of reasons that it doesn't rank well with the other projects. And so I'm afraid that it's probably not going to make it in twenty-four either. So that's what I think is one of our biggest challenges here in the city. Where else can we find eleven and a half million dollars to fund that project? We are shovel-ready. We're ready to go on the project, minus a few pieces of right-of-way. But we are eleven million dollars short, and I just have a feeling that's not going to come through this program. We're going to have to find a different source, maybe an infrastructure program through the federal government or maybe a separate bond issue to make up the difference.
I appreciate the response.
Councilmember Holman.
I was just going to mention briefly that since I'm on the ACOG board as an alternate for Mayor Clark, our traffic control center scored a hundred and I think was the highest rated project in the entire metro, actually. So that was some pretty good news, but I agree that Thirty-Sixth Avenue project is going to continue to be a challenge based on my involvement in ACOG.
Moving on, this is just a quick look at our vehicle replacement program that's paid for out of the capital sales tax. You see that we spend about two million dollars a year on vehicle replacements. We had a fleet study about five years ago that said we should be spending about five million dollars to keep our fleet up to steep, up to speed. But this is what we have and, and we do the best that we can for all the vehicles from police cars to backhoes, for front-end loaders and street maintenance. All those things are competing for that same vehicle replacement money that's coming out of the capital sales tax.
Councilmember Petrow.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, you had spoken in the past about the potential for doing a lease program on some of these vehicles. Can you speak, give us an update there?
The, the folks at Enterprise Rent-A-Car do provide a fleet lease program on just about every type of vehicle we are able to utilize. And right now, what we're seeing is a lot of activity in several fronts that we think fit into councils' long-term goals like grant funding for electric transit buses. And lo and behold, our fleet superintendent, Mike White, indicated that he is now looking at grant opportunities to fund electric garbage trucks, which was an absolute news flash to me. So we're pursuing several fleet replacement programs. Our conversations with the folks at Enterprise did get curtailed with the pandemic. It involves some travel and, and their, their travel availability was reduced to next to nothing. So we think we are emerging from the worst of the pandemic and hope to get back on that horse and get back to the table of the folks at Enterprise to see how much money we can save, bring council some alternatives to purchasing those fleet vehicles. And they could very well become leased vehicles at some point in the very near future.
Thank you. I think every little bit that we can save and allocate elsewhere, but still keep our staff in safe and great vehicles is a win. So if we can know something potentially, do you think before we would adopt this budget?
Yes, should be able to have some information before adoption and be able to measure what those potential savings would look like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are proposing to continue several sidewalk projects on a recurring basis in the fiscal year twenty-two budgets, about three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars on the whole. And if council does not want to continue that program or to reduce it or to expand it, let us know. Here are some other recurring projects that we would propose to include in next year's capital budget. And again, if there are some areas that you would like to see expansions, some areas that you would propose that we could do some saving, let us know. This is what would be proposed to be in next year's capital. This is what would be proposed to be in next year's capital budget on that formula basis that you saw earlier.
Councilor Petrow.
Um, you have 2.6 million for stormwater drainage maintenance. Um, I'm sure that I'm not alone in, um, needing stormwater projects in Ward Three. I'm sure other wards are needing this as well. Um, and I just wanted to encourage, um, city legal, city manager, that we're looking into the Storm Act project as it rolls out, um, through the federal government and that we can submit some of these projects, um, for federal funding, federal loan to 30-year note for next to zero interest, so that we have some options here to help our people.
Um, also focusing on the 1.9 trillion being discussed, uh, in DC presently, we are fortunate in that, um, folks in Public Works and Utilities have several, um, you know, shovel-ready projects that we believe would be very competitive. Uh, even projects ready to go, uh, in the storm drain arena. Um, we, we've, we've got great project descriptions. We've got lots of photos to show what the needs are. And, uh, when the opportunity presents itself, uh, for us to go pursue dollars in that 1.9 trillion, uh, we think we can make a really good case for Norman.
Great, thank you.
Um, the next topic is the ice storm debris removal, which is kind of winding down now. Uh, but it's winding down at a pretty significant cost. Mostly the, that, that cost is borne, um, by the general fund upfront. And then we hope to get reimbursed. Um, my own hope is that we can get reimbursed by June the 30th, um, so that we don't have to close the books on this fiscal year without outstanding obligation. But it's a total cost of $6 million. Um, and so we cannot, we cannot overlook the impact of this cost on the general fund if we have to bear all of it, um, at least on a temporary basis. Moving on then to the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund. Again, there are some large capital expenditures in the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund that were promised when the, um, Public Safety Sales Tax Two ordinance passed. Um, the radio communication system is about complete now, um, at a cost of a little over $12 million. We think that there will be about a million dollars left over from what we budgeted for from that project, um, to help to pay for the cost overrun that we are experiencing in the Emergency Communications and Emergency Operations Center building. The design of that building is complete. It had a budget of $6.4 million. And the full cost that we know now to build it right, um, would be about $16 million. And as you'll recall, that's why council put that difference of about $9 million um, on the August of 2020 general obligation bond proposal, but it did not pass. Um, so the question to council now is, do you want to build it to the level that we can build it with the available public safety sales tax funds? Or would you like to hold off and try to find some new sources of revenue? Either from a new general obligation bond proposal just for that facility or for the hope that we might get, because again, as Sean and, and Daryl say, this is a shovel-ready project. The design is complete. We own the land. We're ready to go. Uh, but we just don't have enough money. And, and so would you like to hold off and try to find the money? Or would you like to build it for what we can afford to build right now? And again, I'll turn to Chief Foster or, or Chief King if, if there's anything that I misspoke here.
No, I think you, you've got everything correct. And the things there at the bottom on that one side is the things we'd have to cut to build it at budget right now. And, uh, we'd struggle with that even.
Councilor Peacock has a statement.
Oh yeah, question. Um, it would be possible to do basically a phase two with that 7,000 square foot reduction without having to do kind of a major redesign, or is it start from square one?
My understanding from the presentations that the, that the design engineers have given to the Public Safety Sales Tax Oversight Committee is that there are a lot of things that could be done in a phase two, but a lot of them that could not. Um, the things like hardening the facility, that, those are foundational things. And so once you've gone underground and built the foundation, you really can't go back on a lot of those things. Um, so again, some things, yes, some things, no, as I understand.
Basically what I assume. Thanks.
As we continue that discussion, it'd be helpful to know how much each of those items cost? If we could see that at some point.
We'll certainly work on that. And I believe that that is available from, from that information that the engineers have produced.
Councilor Foreman.
I just have a question. As we're going through every single one of these projects, are we also taking into account the cost of inflation on all the building materials right now? Like on this, you know, the budget is almost six and a half million, but to get building, we might not even be able to get what we could get out of the money? Um, are we, are we factoring in those costs?
Yeah, the, the cost where you see to build it right, I think, does take into account current building costs. Um, when we did the budget back in 2016 or 14 or whenever it was, I suspect we did not factor those things in. And that might account for some of the delta that you see there. Uh, but I think the $16 million project would build the whole building, um, at today's costs.
Okay.
Also, within the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund is an ongoing, um, vehicle replacement program for fire apparatus. Um, and you see what is being replaced this fiscal year and what is proposed to be replaced over the next couple of fiscal years. Moving quickly into the Norman Forward Fund, um, here are some projects that have been completed in this fiscal year. And I would just point out that, you know, the Blake Baldwin Skate Park is like the hit of the year. I mean, it is a, you know, and, and I'm not speaking for myself. I'm speaking for my son and, and friends of his who are bringing in friends from Tulsa and stuff to enjoy our skate park because it's really, it's certainly regional class. There's some pictures of some of those completed projects from Norman Forward. We are underway with several other Norman Forward projects now. The, um, indoor aquatic and multi-sport facility. Uh, we have a construction manager at risk onboard now. Uh, we have the funding in place for about $29 million. And we have a changed design, uh, for what we can do within that available funding. So we're moving forward with that project and council made major steps forward with that last council meeting. We're moving forward with the Reeves and Griffin projects, um, the Senior Wellness Center. Uh, we'll bid this summer or this fall and it'll take about a year to construct. We have the site identified on the Norman Regional Hospital Porter Campus. And again, that's a, a long time incoming project that's, that's nearing the real deal. Here's what a couple of those things will look like. Here are some future Norman Forward projects that are on the boards and will be coming forward uh, as we move forward into the near and midterm future. We have put on hold most of the parks portion funding of room tax fund projects. But as you'll recall, um, there is some fund balance available in the parks portion of the room tax fund to move forward on those projects whenever we're able to. Here are some challenges, uh, for council to, to keep in mind as we move forward in the capital budgeting process. One of them, of course, is that, um, 36th Avenue Northwest project. Um, we have cost overruns on several projects, um, that are on the boards right now. We are, uh, in the process of acquiring a new building at 718 North Porter. And the consideration will be what we want to do with that building and how we want to use it and how we would fund whatever we decide to do, uh, with that building. As we move forward with municipal complex improvements, the 11.25 million dollars in general obligation bond funds that we, um, that we have on hand will not be enough to do all the municipal complex improvements that we, that we need to do and that council has directed to be done. Uh, as you know, the bond issue was only anticipating, uh, the refurbishment of the existing library building and refurbishment of what we now know as Building A and Building B, uh, which will be the municipal court and the police headquarters. But after those things are done, we will still have some challenges and things to do in the City Hall building and in Building C, uh, where I am sitting now, uh, to, to move forward with those programs for what we want those facilities to be, uh, to house our future needs.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I know we're super short on time, but, and you don't need to answer it right now. I just want to throw it out there. But would it be possible for 718 North Quarter to be a temporary EOC while we continue raising funds to get the full build-out? And that's something that they'll have to think about, but, um, I just, if we're gonna be acquiring something and we need some time to get some more money for the full build-out on EOC, it just seemed like maybe a temporary retrofit for another year could be option.
That's a very good, interesting idea. I will, you know, we'll have to explore, uh, with the city attorney, whether the public safety sales tax funds that were voted on for a new building could be used to refurbish that building, but that's certainly an option that we'll be looking into. Very good idea.
Yeah, thanks.
So as we move forward in the budgeting process, um, we will, we will have a series of study sessions where the city manager's proposed budget will be completed to council. Between now and then, we would ask for your input and direction into the budget based on the information that you've gotten tonight, the information that you already have. And any questions that you have, we'll be glad to try to respond to them as we prepare that budget. It'd be said that I did not finish with two minutes to spare.
You did good. Uh, can you go back to that last slide, Anthony, please? I want to emphasize for those watching at home, the public hearings are set for April 27th and May 25th. So please mark your calendars now. We have just a few minutes until our regular meeting begins, but it is the same Zoom link. So council members and staff, please mute and turn off your videos and I'll see you shortly.
Okay, we'll get started in just a moment. Okay, Mayor, you can go ahead and start if you wish.
Okay, there we go. I think we were muting and unmuting in our new webinar format. So my apologies for that. Okay, thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. Welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting, February twenty-third, twenty-one. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Beerman? Counselor Beerman, can you do some moment here? I'm sorry. This is my fault. Just a second, I need to turn off. Okay, now you should be able to unmute yourself, Counselor Beerman.
I'm here. I was just not allowed to unmute myself.
Counselor Patron? Counselor Patron, are you still with us? I see her just connecting to audio. Counselor Member Hall?
Counselor Member Hall?
Here.
Counselor Member Nash?
Here.
Counselor Member Foreman?
Here.
Counselor Member Holman?
Here.
Counselor Member Peacock?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Forgot how fun that was in a virtual setting. And just a reminder to all council members, please make sure your videos stay on at all times. Before we get started, we have a couple other announcements. I want to take care of a couple housekeeping items. And First City Manager Pyle would like to take this opportunity to introduce council to the new Community Affairs Manager for O G N E.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have with us, she's in my top row on on my screen, Mrs. Kimberly Adams of O G N E. I had the privilege of meeting with Kimberly a couple of weeks ago, just in time for Snowmageddon twenty-twenty-one. We were in close communication throughout that entire event, and I can say Mrs. Adams was very responsive. I believe we've connected Mrs. Adams with council via phone number and email address. And now is council's opportunity to put a face with the name Kimberly. There we go.
Yes, thank you so much, and I do appreciate the opportunity to just participate in your meeting, to say hello. And I know a few of you I have met via Zoom virtually in previous meetings, but I do look forward to the time when we can meet face to face. And I think the only thing I would like to convey to everyone is that at O G N E in Norman, certainly over the past couple of years with my former standing colleague, Tom McCurdy, I know a lot of progress was made with some solar and renewable projects. And I just want you to know that I hope to pick up and continue to be a good partner from from that point, and I'm looking forward to the future. And beyond that, you have my contact information, just please reach out.
Thanks, Kimberly. Much appreciated. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Well, secondly, after hearing from our constituents, council is continuing to implement guidelines to facilitate our council meeting, especially in this new Zoom webinar format in a more efficient manner. You'll now be asked to sign up advanced with your name, address, and item number you wish to speak to. You can do this on the city's website prior to the meeting. And when the time comes for public comments, the clerk will call your name and recognize you to speak. Since this is a new change, there's also a sign-in sheet at the back of the council chambers for you to register tonight. Applicants will be given ten minutes to make their presentations, and all others may speak no more than three minutes. On our next agenda for our next meeting, we're also moving council announcements to the beginning. So we often have some very helpful things to share about events and activities in our wards that I sometimes think people have already tuned out for when we share them. So hopefully that will help, again, facilitate the sharing of information in our community. Moving on, item three, approval of the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Minutes of February ninth, twenty-twenty-one. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Don't move.
Second. Thank you. The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
My apologies. Counselor Beerman?
Aye.
Counselor Patron?
Aye.
Counselor Patron?
Aye.
Counselor Manat?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Foreman?
Aye.
Counselor Holman?
Yes.
Counselor Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now, item four, oath of office to seat Councilmember-elect Matt McGary. I'd like to recognize Judge David Porch to administer the oath of office to this councilmember-elect.
Matt McGary, will you please join me by raising your right hand and unmuting yourself? There you go, better. You'll repeat after me, please. I, Matt McGary, do solemnly swear.
I, Matt McGary, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly.
And that I will not knowingly receive directly and indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
And I further swear.
And I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties as councilmember.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties as councilmember.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Mr. McGary. I declare you to be duly sworn and seated to the office of councilmember for Ward Two.
Thank you, Judge Porch.
Thank you.
All right. Welcome, council.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. Thank you, everyone, fellow council members. I really appreciate your warm welcome. I look forward to working with all of you over the remainder of my term. Thank you.
And to Councilmember Carter, thank you for your service. We appreciate you stepping up during this short period of time until we could have another election to fill the seat. All right, we continue on. Item four, or excuse me, item five, Proclamation twenty-twenty-one dash fourteen, proclaiming the month of March twenty-twenty-one as Women's History Month in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Second.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Beerman?
Aye.
Beerman?
Aye.
Counselor McGary? Counselor McGary?
Aye.
Counselor Patron?
Aye.
Counselor Patron?
Aye.
Okay. Counselor Hall? Counselor Hall?
Aye.
Counselor Nash?
Aye.
Counselor Foreman?
Aye.
Counselor Holman?
Yes.
Counselor Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The motion was approved unanimously.
Okay. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of March twenty-twenty-one as Women's History Month in the city of Norman. Whereas, since its inception as Women's History Week in nineteen eighty-one, Women's History Month recognizes honors and celebrates the achievements of American women. And whereas, twenty-twenty-one's national theme for Women's History Month, Valiant Women of the Vote, Refusing to be Silenced, recognizes the Centennial of the Nineteenth Amendment and honors the brave women who fought to win suffrage rights for women, as well as the women who continue to fight for the voting rights of others. And whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background serve as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas, American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, and the civil rights movement. And whereas, the influence and accomplishments of women demonstrating leadership and professionalism in our community have contributed to all aspects of life, including the arts, education, medicine, business, government, and religion, and have continued to help make Norman a safe, thriving, and vibrant community. Now, therefore, I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of March twenty-twenty-one as Women's History Month in the city of Norman, and invite all citizens to join me in celebrating the contributions and accomplishments of women in our community. Now, to accept this proclamation, I'd like to recognize our new chair of the Human Rights Commission, Sage Malden, and Julie Knudsen to receive the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. Hi, everyone. My name is Sage Malden. My personal pronouncer, he/him. As Mayor Clark just said, I am the newly elected chair of the Norman's Human Rights Commission. I look forward to working closely with you, Mayor Clark, and council members moving forward. So tonight, I have the distinct honor of presenting Norman's Women's History Month proclamation to one of our amazing residents, Julie Knudsen. Julie, would you mind waving? There she is. So Julie has been a resident of Norman since nineteen seventy-nine. Over the course of her illustrious, highly decorated, and glass-ceiling-shattering career, she has been a teacher, a school counselor, an assistant principal and the director of counseling for Norman Public Schools, and an adjunct professor at the University of Oklahoma. She has also served as president of the Oklahoma Counseling Association, a board member of the State Chamber of Oklahoma, the chairperson of the Midwest Region of the American Counseling Association, and a member of the State Department of Education Task Force on Middle Level Education Development. Currently, she serves as president and CEO of the Oklahoma Academy for State Goals, a position she has held since nineteen eighty-seven, a chairperson of the Certified Healthy Businesses Committee within Oklahoma Turning Point, an advisory member of N E W Leadership for Women with the Carl Albert Center, and a member of the Norman Chamber, the Greater OKC Chamber, and the Tulsa Regional Chamber. For her critical work, she was selected by the Journal Record as being one of the top fifty corporate women in Oklahoma in nineteen ninety-seven, and again in two thousand and six. She also earned recognition as one of Oklahoma's most admired CEOs in two thousand and eleven. I cannot think of anyone more deserving of this proclamation than Julie. Congratulations, Julie.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Sage. Thank you, Mayor Clark. Thank you, everyone. I am very honored and humbled to be able to accept the proclamation on behalf of the women in the state of Oklahoma, the women in Norman, Oklahoma, citizens all across Norman. Dedicating the month of March to highlighting the contributions women have made to significant events in history and contemporary society is critically important. And I applaud the council and the mayor for recognizing the month of March for Women's History Month, especially here in Norman. I think of so many women over the years and so many women currently who have given so much time, effort, and dedication to making significant change in so many different areas. And I think Oklahoma has been blessed with many to include, and I almost hate to list a few names because I know I will forget some and certainly not mean to, but Angie DeBeau, Yvonne Cogger, Sherri Cole, Kristin Chenoweth. We have had Wilma Mannkiller. We have had so many women from so many areas make significant contribution. And I am very, very humbled again and honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the city of Norman. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. I also want to announce that last year, or in celebration of International Women's Day, we had a little kind of retreat here at City Hall, which will not be happening this year. But similar to what we did for Black History Month on International Women's Day, Monday, March eighth, at six P M., we will be doing a Women's Perspectives. So a panel of Women's Perspectives of city employees from all different areas. So I hope you'll join us. It will be featured live on the city's YouTube channel. Now we will move on to the consent docket. Excuse me. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items seven through twenty-four on the consent docket. Second. Thank you.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to place items four through nineteen on the consent docket. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Beerman?
Aye.
Counselor McGary?
Aye.
Counselor McGary?
Aye. Aye.
Counselor Patron? Counselor Patron? Counselor Hall? Counselor Nash?
Aye.
Counselor Foreman?
Aye.
Counselor Holman?
Yes.
Counselor Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item seven, submission of the mayor's appointment of Councilmember Lee Hall to the Ad Hoc Committee to Address Homelessness. Item eight, submission of the Finance Investment Report as of January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Item nine, submission of the monthly departmental reports for the month of January twenty-twenty-one. Item ten, bid for the installation of pavement parking through the Traffic Control Division. Item eleven, bid, contract, and associated bonds with PM Construction and Rehab LLC in the amount of one million seventy-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars for the F Y E twenty-twenty-one Stormwater Pipe Replacement Project Resolution granting tax-exempt status and budget transfer. Item twelve, Norman Rural Certificate of Survey twenty-twenty-one dash seven for Dollar Family Estates located at fifty-seven twenty- Item 12, Norman Rural Certificate of Survey 2021-7 for Dollar Family Estates located at 5725 Broadway. Item 13, change order number one to contract 2021-9 with RDNJ LLC, doing business as A-Tech Paving, increasing the contract amount by $78,850.38 for a total contract amount of $994,262.79 for the Interstate Drive Reconstruction Project located on East Interstate Drive from Main Street to Robin Street. The next six items are programming resolutions to be submitted to the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, requesting federal surface transportation program urbanized area funds for the following projects. Item 14, Resolution 2021-87, the installation of a traffic signal interconnection upgrade on 36th Avenue Northwest from Tecumseh Road to Robinson East. Item 15, Resolution 2021-88, the installation of a new traffic signal at the intersection of 36th Avenue Northwest and Bark Connor Drive. Item 16, Resolution 2021-89, the installation of a new traffic signal at the intersection of 36th Avenue Northwest and Cascade Boulevard. Item 17, Resolution 2021-90, enhancements of the city's public transit vehicle fleet. Item 18, Resolution 2021-91, the installation of pavement parkings at various locations along the federally functionally classified transportation system. Item 19, Resolution 2021-92, traffic signal emergency vehicle preemption system upgrades at various signalized intersections Phase Three. Item 20, Resolution 2021-93, changing the functional classification of James Garner Avenue between Acre Street and Main Street from a local street to a minor arterial in Norman. Item 21, Resolution 2021-94, appropriating $21,927 from the animal welfare donations account to be used at the Animal Welfare Center. Item 22, Resolution 2021-97, authorizing joint petition settlement of workers' compensation claim filed by Travis S. Adams. Item 23, Resolution 2021-98, approving the transfer of certain equipment previously used by the city's street division to Cleveland County in furtherance of the annual interlocal agreement between the city of Norman and Cleveland County. Item 24, Resolution 2021-99, approving a new project BP0481, 12th Avenue Southeast and Sawgrass Drive, to be included in the 2016 Street Maintenance Bond Program and transferring $90,822.05 to the new project's account. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
Second.
Are there any comments regarding any item on the consent docket?
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. I have a question for staff on item number 24, the Sawgrass Drive. One of the questions I received from a resident in Cobblestone was about the, because the budget's pretty tight on this one, the why we're doing a 30-inch pipe instead of a 24-inch pipe. I guess the piping in the Monterey edition is 24. And so that was one of the questions I wanted to ask. And then the bollards, I guess the final solution at Sawgrass won't have bollards, but it is part of the budget that was in our, on the agenda item. And so maybe just mention that, what we're doing with that specifically. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman. I've got city engineer Scott Sturts online with us too, but try to tackle those two questions. The, so our engineering staff has designed this small little segment of 12th Avenue Southeast, including the stormwater system. And we believe the 30-inch pipeline size is actually correct for the runoff quantities now and in the future. In that area, we are receiving some runoff from Eagle Cliff in that area as well. So we're pretty comfortable with that design and, you know, perhaps there's a little bit more factor of safety in that, but always better to have more than less when it comes to stormwater and flooding, especially when you're at the low end of the watershed. And then regarding the cul-de-sac, we are going to install a full curved closing, if you will. So no bollards, no other devices like that, like we've had over the recent years. This will have a concrete plume going around the curb and then into an underground stormwater system. So be a really nice, clean-looking finish to this area. You know, this has been a a project that's been pending for about 10 years, waiting for that area in Cobblestone to finally develop and sort of fill in the gap there. So we're thrilled to be able to bring this to you, get it funded, and get the entire system completed now in the next few months.
Okay. I appreciate that explanation. Like I said, I've had that question about why we were increasing the size of the piping, but being that it is at the end and at the bottom as you get towards the river. If we're expecting, you know, that runoff could be increasing over the next few years in the area. I suppose that would make sense. But like I said, the cost being what it is, the funding for this project to get done and how long we've been waiting, I really wanted to clarify that, that we were, whether we're getting the best, you know, best use of it or not. And then, and of course, you know, a lot of the residents that live at the end of Sawgrass specifically have been asking for a long time about what the final result of this project will be. And what you've described is exactly what I've heard that they want, based on the feedback I received from them, was that they wanted to close it off with no bollards. And most, I think everyone understands that that has to be, based on my understanding anyway, that until Augusta Drive is finished, that that exit has to remain. But once that's finished and the 12th Avenue curb is finished, then we can finish that, the cul-de-sac part. And then the other part, of course, was the fencing part, but that's not us. I think we've identified that that's something the residents, if they want to put that in, will have the ability to do so with their, they can pull together the funding, I suppose. So that's really the only questions I had about it. I am really excited to get this project moving forward and as it has been, as you mentioned, a very long time. I never thought there would be so many issues with a single cul-de-sac in Ward Seven. But it is what it is, I guess. So thank you very much. I appreciate that information.
Very welcome, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from council regarding any other item on the consent docket?
Being done, Mayor.
All right. The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Aye.
Councilmember McGary.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The consent docket is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Item 25, a preliminary plot for Win-Win Edition located at 3724 Claussen Boulevard. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plot.
Second.
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 Thank you. I'd like to recognize the applicant, Mark Grubbs, from Grubbs Consulting, to make a presentation.
Hello. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Chris Colain from Grubbs Consulting, representing the applicant for the preliminary plot of Win-Win Edition. We're requesting approval of this preliminary plat. The preliminary plat was approved unanimously at Planning Commission and is recommended for approval by city staff. This property is located at 3724 Claussen Boulevard, approximately 1.1 acres, zoned I-1. Proposed uses are manufacturing warehouse space and some office space. We're proposing some public improvements along the frontage of Claussen Boulevard and a stormwater detention area at the rear of the property on the west side. I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Yes, Mayor.
This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments?
Being done.
Okay. Are there any final comments from council regarding this item?
Being done.
The motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Aye.
Councilmember McGary.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall. Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The preliminary plat is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Item 26, Ordinance 2021-26, rezoning 2413 East Tecumseh Road from A-2 Rural Agricultural District to PUD, Plan Unit Development District. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Second.
I'd like to recognize Dave Beck, a representative of the applicant, to make a presentation.
Thank you very much, Mayor Beerman. Dave Beck, architect here in town, professor at OU, an advocate for aging in place and accessibility, participant in the committee that Bill Hickman, Kate Beerman, and Sarita Wilson participated in and putting together a visitability ordinance that's somewhere at the city, being considered and discussed, and hopefully will be approved by council in the near future. And so when my friends, oh, 922 Schultz Drive, Norman, Oklahoma, when my friends Larry and Joanne came to me and asked about designing a house for them that would be accessible so that their daughter, son-in-law, and grandkids could move into the house that they were in that's not accessible, I jumped at it because I thought that's, this would be an exciting example of what can be done. We've talked a lot in the past and in the current times about accessory dwelling units and have some things, and there's been lots of discussions of whether accessory dwelling units are appropriate or not and where they should be appropriate. And have actually passed certain ordinances protecting certain places from getting houses that could be rented out. So that's why we thought we'd put together a PUD that would specifically talk about what's being planned, how it would be built, and who it's for. So I'm going to share the site plan so you guys can see where's the site plan. There. Well, let's see. Shoot.
Should be at the bottom.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just bring up the floor plan, just so we can get this done. I wasn't planning on showing the project as detailed as this, but in talking to Lee Hall and discussing this project and discussing the education of what is accessible, what is visitable, she thought it might be a good idea to show this so that people on council and people who are residents in the city can understand what that means to design a house that's accessible or visitable. So it's 1,320 square feet. It's two-bedroom, two-bath. It's got a kitchen, laundry room, and garage. There are no steps. Like my house, it was designed so the garage slopes to the door. Materials that are used in the house were known to encourage, but allow for the use of wheelchair if it's needed, or a walker. Carpets and soft materials aren't very good, but wood floors and tiles are really good, like I've done in my house. Specific things need to be designed so that it can be accessible from someone in a wheelchair. So I've shown the magic five-foot radius in certain places to show that these rooms were designed to be considered for use with a wheelchair. The laundry, the kitchen, the bedroom. The master bath is specifically, the shower is accessible, roll-in shower, no step up or step down. There's enough space by the toilet to allow for the use of a wheelchair. All doors are three-foot doors. It's got a storm shelter. The master closet's gonna be a storm shelter. The front and back porches and the sidewalks, there's no steps. So basically, it's designed to be accessible and allow for them to age in place. You know, as long as they stay healthy and can get the, as they start to change physically, that the house will encourage and support them. Any questions?
Any questions from council regarding this item?
Councilmember Hall.
So thank you for going into that detail. Could you, could you explain what the difference is between accessible and visitable? I know that you stated that you worked on the committee that has drafted a visibility ordinance that we're hoping to get to, but could you just explain for everyone who's watching what the difference is? And is this house considered accessible or visitable, and why?
It's considered both. Visitable is a more palatable word than accessible. Throughout the whole discussion, when we were putting this together, there was a reluctance to use the term accessible because people think of hospitals, they think of grab bars, they think of serious health conditions. And so we coined, worded the visitability ordinance with specific things that have been done in places like Austin or other cities that have already got a visitability ordinance. It starts out with the walks are wide enough for wheelchair. There's no steps. All the doors are at least three foot wide. At least one bathroom is accessible, meaning that, or that can handle a wheelchair. Visitable, the question is whether you need to put in grab bars, but you would design and build a house so that if you didn't put them in when you first built the house, that you put grab bars in very easily later on, which would then change it to be accessible. Cabinets in an accessible house are two inches shorter. There's a specific idea of allowing under bathroom sinks and under kitchen sinks the ability for the wheelchair to pull in so that they can use those fixtures. But that's not part of the first level of visitability. Although we would design this kitchen, you notice there was no corner cabinets in my work doing accessible houses, visitable houses. I've eliminated corner cabinets because even for very healthy, robust people getting into that corner cabinet, it's next to impossible, and you can't really store anything there. So if you design a kitchen right, it becomes more efficient. But that's, the specific things that you would do to make it accessible cost a little bit more. And so a lot of people are putting together the visitor audience reluctant to include. Because there's ways you can design a regular kitchen.
There's ways you can design a regular kitchen to make.
There's lots of feedback.
Lots of feedback.
Okay. I just have a couple more questions. On your site plan, the way you have the accessory dwelling unit sited, there is an entrance off of, I think it's Tecumseh. So there's already a driveway off Tecumseh to the main house. Is that gonna be a new entrance off Tecumseh?
Yes.
For the second house, for the accessory dwelling unit.
There's enough distance there. We're trying to pull off that single drive and pull another drive all the way over to the new house seemed to be very inefficient and expensive. There's enough space between the two driveways where we didn't see that as being a safety issue, and I don't think the city engineering did either.
And my, my other question was really concerning the use of a PUD for a project like this and the ability to write in restrictions that you might not otherwise be able to do with just a normal zoning change. So I noticed that in this PUD that you are restricting the ability to rent or lease the accessory dwelling unit. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. There's been.
Yes, ma'am. There's been, I don't know why there's this. There's been, I don't know why there's this feedback, but.
Just a moment, Dave, Lee, do you happen to have your YouTube feed on too?
Yes, I do, but I don't, it's on silent, should I turn it off?
Go ahead and turn it off, I think that's where the feedback's coming in.
Um.
What's that?
The importance, okay, the importance of using.
The importance of using.
Requirements, limitations was done just so that we could, with assurance to anybody in the neighborhood and anybody that had questioned that.
Had questioned that.
Be built as a rental unit, this was designed to be built as an accessible and accessory dwelling unit for this family. So that's why we added those, with a PUD, you can add those limitations, and that's what we did.
Okay, well, I just really appreciate that, and I really appreciate the innovations in this project in what we hope to be a post-pandemic world, to be able to create an option for a couple like the Klumps to be able to stay on their own property, but transition to housing that really adapts to what they need and also have the ability to have their children close by if they need care from their family in the future. So thank you for bringing this project for us.
Well, thank you.
Councilmember Beerman.
So I wanted to take a moment and heap a ton of praise on Dave Beck so that hopefully he'll indulge me a little bit as I put in a plug for the visitability ordinance on my way out the door. I'm really glad to see this project and to see a PUD used in a way to minimize the concerns that generally come up from council when it comes to the use of PUDs. I, as all of you know, support this visitability ordinance that we're continuing to work on, and I really appreciate Dave Beck kind of putting, putting kind of his money and his reputation where our, where our policy is and trying to kind of put this into practice even before we get an incentive for this on the table. Lee kind of went through and touched on all the points I wanted to touch on, so I figured I would just say thank you, Dave, and I hope that this council can get the visitability ordinance across the finish line this year so that we can start to see it in action. I'm gonna mute you before my daughter talks to me.
Thank you, Kate, I so enjoy working with you, and good luck in the future.
I'm not seeing any other council questions, Mayor.
All right, this is an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions, are there any?
Seeing none.
Are there any final comments from council regarding this item?
Once again, seeing none.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Aye.
Councilmember McGary.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Sighted, yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon second reading unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Aye.
Councilmember McGary.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yeah.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon final reading unanimously.
Thank you. On to item 27, ordinance 2021-27, amending the planned unit development established in ordinance 0910-11 for property located on the southwest corner of Interstate Drive and West Tecumseh Road. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
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 Thank you. I'd now like to recognize Sean Rieger, a representative of the applicant, to make a presentation.
All right, thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Well, we're respective of your time, the 10 minutes, we'll try to be as quick as we can. It is my great pleasure to introduce this to you tonight, Norman Regional Health System in their next project of Inspire Health to bring the expansion at the Tecumseh Health Plex forward. First, I want to introduce President and CEO Richie Split, who will take you through first an update of where we're at on Inspire Health, and then present to you for the first time to the public, some public imagery of what the Health Plex will be in the Tecumseh location. So Mr. Split, if you'll carry it away, and then after Richie is done, I'll come back with the boring legal and engineering stuff that we'll actually vote on tonight. So Richie, take it away, please.
Might be muted, Richie.
Okay. There we go. Okay, so thank you, Sean, and thank you, council. It's exciting for all of us to be here. These are other members of the Norman Regional team who are on the call, and then you see representatives from those entities at the bottom right of this screen who are also a part of this wonderful project. So it's, it's an honor to be here and to share with you just how close we are to the fruition of what we all started so long ago called Inspire Health. So with that being said, I have a lot of images. I've, I've been requested to give an overall update for the Inspire Health Plan, and of course, we're here tonight to talk about the PUD amendment for the Health Plex expansion. But I want to touch on our five big projects as we move forward. So without further ado, I would like to share with you just a reminder of our mission and our vision statement as the health system, that Norman Municipal Hospital was born in 1946, and this June, we will be celebrating our diamond anniversary, 75 years of life-saving care in our community, and we're very excited to do that, and we'll be sharing more information about it as well. But beyond our mission and our vision, you know that Inspire Health is all about our commitment to health and wellness in our community. It's about providing that sick care, but it's really transitioning and transforming our organization into a regional focus on health and wellness. And so on behalf of our 3,500 employees and nearly 400 credentialed physicians on staff, again, we're honored to bring this plan forward. So Inspire Health really is five big projects, and you know them well. And for those new members on council that weren't here roughly just over a year ago, I'll spend a little time explaining each of them. So here are those five projects. It is the Health Plex expansion that includes the ambulatory and cancer center pavilions. It includes the freestanding emergency department plus in southeast Norman, the Porter Health Village that will also include a 48-bed inpatient behavioral health facility. And really, the goal of this project, as you know, is to, again, foster that health and wellness in our community, and we are grateful to partner with the city and others to bring that vision to life. So here, we'll start with the freestanding emergency department plus. This, these are the 30 acres that we had brought to you before, and due to your approval, we were able to begin our planning, and the shaded purple area is the ED, the emergency department itself. And you can see the dashed purple line, I hope, and that is the future expansion. The ER will be on the west side of this property, and then you see the blue shaded areas, and those are, I'm sorry, let me go back, those blue shaded areas are, as you know, for future development. And you might notice here this logo that due to CMS, Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, we are required to have a very specific naming convention. And so it all, it involves the location of the facility. So the name of our facility on Highway 9 and 24th Avenue Southeast will be Norman Regional 9. And these are some of the images that we have of that design going forward. So taking you inside that facility, it'll be a two-story structure, and this would be the check-in for the emergency room. And most images that I share with you, you will see this green wall. It looks like moss, it's actually lichen, but this green lichen and moss is a wayfinding opportunity. So everywhere you see this green wall is a place where you can seek information, and you know this is an entry point or an information point. So you'll see the, see that throughout these slides. So in Norman Regional 9, this would be your entry into the emergency department, and we're gonna take a walk down the hall to those stairs that you see at the end. It looks like this, and through those windows is a wonderful point of respite, a park, a gathering space that we all can enjoy as part of the community. And then the gentleman in the blue coat, that's a coffee bar, there's an entrance there where the child is walking in. And when we walk upstairs, you can see that same view of this wonderful potential development and just the park-like atmosphere that we will, we will have, very serene surrounding our, our FSED plus. In the background, you see the clinic check-in, and again, that green lichen wall. So you can check in for a visit with your family practice physician, or you can go down the hall a little further to the rehab space and where you, you might get some physical therapy. Inside the clinic space, it looks a little bit like this, and you can see this is a gathering space, a collaboration point for the healers in the department, and just behind the television would be those exam rooms. But taking advantage of those views, and this really is inspiring for me, if you're going to have rehab, this is the place you want to have it. Again, a beautiful vista on the second floor overlooking that, those 30 acres, and just a great place to continue therapy, strengthening, et cetera. And then moving outside the FSED, we're gonna move to the Porter Health Village and the Behavioral Health Center. I mentioned already that we are celebrating 75 years this June, we'll communicate what that looks like and how you can participate, but we're really gonna honor the Norman Regional Hospital on Porter Avenue this June. So more information to follow about that. And this little call-out, actually, if you follow it down to its narrowest point, this is a part of the original 1946 building. So parts of the original structure is still on the campus, and it is in existence today. So the, the future of this campus, as you know, is to transform into a health village, and we're still finalizing that site plan for this overall site, and so when we have that completed, I'm happy to share that with you. Just know that the Senior Wellness Center will be located in that southeast corner that's just off the bottom right corner screen. Our Behavioral Health Center will be basically below that narrow point for the 75th anniversary. Again, 48 inpatient behavioral health beds, and then the variety care location could be in this bottom left corner as well. So once we have that site plan finished, I'll be sharing that with you, and we are excited about that possibility moving forward. Next is the Health Plex expansion, and again, the reason we're here tonight is to discuss the PUD expansion, or I'm sorry, the PUD amendment for this expansion project. So here is what that looks like in an aerial view. You can see the hospital in its existing state with some new blocks to the right, I'll be more specific about that. So in this slide, Tecumseh is at the top of the screen, I-35 is on the right. In this screen, in this image, Tecumseh is on the bottom, I-35 is on the left. Every scene, everything you see in blue is the existing structure today. Everything in that purple shading is new construction, so you can see it's a sizable expansion project, and that expansion includes a cancer center, a new patient tower, an emergency department, an ambulatory center, and a parking structure as well. And also featured is a big circular drive that we'll spend a little time on in just a moment. So that image with color looks a lot like this, existing in the foreground, the new construction in the back, parking garage to the left. And this is just another view looking a little bit to the northwest across that expanded campus. And this is looking a little bit due north at the new patient tower, the cancer center in the bottom left, ambulatory center, and then that parking structure as well. And we're really excited about that cancer center location because it will take, take advantage of this wonderful, very serene environment that overlooks the pond that's already in existence today. Here's that circle drive that I was telling you about, that blue arrow shows the existing pickup drop-off space for the Health Plex. The purple dashed line is the new construction, hoping that this gives you some idea of that scope and size of our addition and what that will, again, will continue to look like. Walking inside, if you've dropped a patient off and you've parked, you've walked through the parking garage in the, the main entrance in the concourse area, there's that lichen wall, point of information, check in, if you will, and we'll just move down that concourse. It looks like this, going across from left to right. The first site would be the Healer Garden, a place of respite where you can connect with your friends and your family or just simply wait. So that will be a nice feature with great views, and you can see the finishes here, open, airy, very healing. And then the gift shop right around the corner is what you see in this image. I want to point out this stone wall, you can see just a bit of this stone wall, that is the iconic Health Plex stone wall that is all outside today. Two stories of that stone wall are moving inside, just to give you some idea of what this and where this expansion is going to occur. So parts of that angular iconic stone wall moves inside as part of this expansion plan. Next is the patient tower, this is that image that would be on the southern end, and so this is a view of the very elegant, very modern stylistic approach to, again, patient rooms. And in the right corner, there's some red writing, that's actually the emergency department on the first floor. So this is where the ER is located, just below that, that new patient tower. The pond is to the left, and we'll take a little closer look. If you walk into the emergency department, there's again that lichen wall, and this is where you check in for the emergency department. If you turn around, look out the facility outside the ER, this is what you would see from the parking lot looking south. This is a view inside the emergency department and all the exam rooms, again, playing off those very healing and soothing colors. View inside the patient room, sizable, spacious, again, just a beautiful look. And from the pond, looking at that brand-new patient tower, and off to the right is that cancer center that I mentioned, again, a very healing environment that we're all excited to get started on ASAP. So how and when will this be finished? Here's the estimation of those, of the timeline, so the FSED will be the first project completed as part of Inspire Health, and that is estimated to be late June or late 2022. We hope to have a groundbreaking for the FSED this May, more information to follow. The Health Plex and ambulatory and cancer center pavilions would be next in roughly mid-2023, and we hope to have the groundbreaking for that part of, you know, the expansion in July of this year. And nestled in between those two will be the 75th anniversary of the Norman Regional Hospital on Porter. The Porter Health Village construction will, will be underway as soon as possible with the completion date being somewhere in the 2025 timeframe. So that's the timeline for all five of our big projects of Inspire Health, and as of today, we launched our new website. If you'd like to see more information and stay up to date with the project at inspirehealthok.com, you can go there and you can learn about these projects as they are underway. And with that, I'll close with this view, driving into that circular drive for very convenient pickup and drop-off, access to the hospital, to parking, all things healthcare, health and wellness. This is what it would look like as you drive into the facility. Sean, I'll turn it over to you at this point.
All right, thank you, Richie, we appreciate that very much, and I'll take you now through the more mundane parts of what we have to talk about tonight, which is the actual vote of, of the PUD amendment and the plat. First, I would be remiss not to just put the names in front of you of the team. You see Richie Split, John Manfredo, Paulo Price of the Health Plex, and these other names. We meet weekly, we have a large team that goes through all of this, multiple firms looking at what is a very large project and putting their expertise on it. So again, being mindful of your time, I'm gonna cruise through these pretty quickly. Richie showed you the site, this is an aerial of what is there now, and we all know this complex, and it's been a great treasure for our community, and certainly during COVID, it doesn't go unnoticed tonight. But the site you can see is basically the central complex and then parking around it with a road that comes around to the side, and the only thing we're amending tonight is what you see in the yellow dashed areas. The rest is a larger PUD, the PUD actually covers about 94 acres. We are only amending the Health Plex part of this PUD, which is about 35 acres, as you see in the yellow right there. As to your vote tonight, as you do as council members, you vote on zoning and plats typically. And as to the zoning component of this tonight, we're really making very few changes. The current zoning is a PUD, you see all the pink there are PUDs. We're still going to be a PUD tonight, we have slight amendments that we're gonna talk through with you. And then as to 2025, there is no change. 2025 has this site as blue institutional, of course, the hospital is institutional. It does have one small part of it as commercial, that part of it will basically be a parking lot and also accommodates what is planned tonight. So why are we in front of you? Well, it's pretty simple, we're in front of you because. So why are we in front of you? Well, it's pretty simple. We're in front of you because this requires a site plan amendment. Whenever we do a PUD, a PUD has a site planning component to it that is part of the PUD. A site plan is adopted as a requirement within the PUD. And therefore, in the future, if we ever build anything different, substantially different than a site plan that was part of a PUD, we have to come back to you for the approval of a modification to that site plan. And so that is what brought us before you on this project. Otherwise, we, we probably wouldn't be here except for possibly some signage issues. So what you see on the left is the 2009 adopted site plan. And the red is basically the, the vertical building components. And this is a little bit of a messy drawing, but that's what was adopted in 2009. And I put the aerial next to it because this is a lot more readable, but you see these large parking lots around it to the upper right. And you see that pond that Richie talked about. Again, the red is the building footprint, basically. And the, the site extends down to this roundabout right here. The changes is what you see on the right. The purple is the additional buildings, as Richie mentioned to you and showed you that tremendous imagery. And this, the drive now moves, as you can see, before the drive came around, you see my pointer, it came around close to the building with large parking lots, surface parking lots on outside of it. In the change plans, now the drive moves all the way around to the perimeter with a parking garage right there. And with other buildings shown in purple here. That large drop-off space that Richie showed you is this center element right here in between the, the old structure and the new expanded structure. One of the things I hope you'll notice in these drawings that I think is pretty compelling. Look at the amount of surface parking before and look at it after. These are at different sizes. So it looks like maybe this is more, but actually the surface parking is not much different in quantity than what it was before. And it's really a testament to the efficiency of this design and that they're taking this building right here as a vertical parking structure of about six levels equivalent of about a five-story building. But if you can imagine, if we were to do that in surface parking, take that parking garage, that shape and multiply it times six across this site. And that's what you would see. When we can do parking garages such as in projects like this, we can save tremendously on impervious ground and really do it in a much more environmentally sensitive fashion. So we're proud of that tonight. This expansion, as Richie talked to you about, will basically feature a parking structure right here, ambulatory care center here, Healthplex expansion here, right next to the Healthplex, cancer, cancer center here. And again, the large road around it, private road that is, and parking lots here. I should have mentioned, we have offset, we had a roundabout here. What has happened next is we've brought that drive farther back in. And so now we have longer stack spaces, we like to call it in traffic management. And so we can have longer stack space for cars and manage that X away a little bit better. The actual preliminary plat that you're voting on tonight, it's the second component is this document. And Terry Haynes with SMC is on board tonight to answer any questions you may have about that. I usually don't spend much time talking about that because you see all the spaghetti of utility lines and easements and all those things. That's what engineers do all day long and Terry is adept at talking about that. This is the green space diagram. And I wanted to show you as opposed to previously, there's really, again, not a lot of difference. You can see the large green space all the way around the upper northeast side of it is basically preserved. The large road that now extends around it goes at similar location to what the parking lot was with the parking garage here now. We do have new parking lots down to the southeast. But these areas were already planned previously in 2009 as being a series of buildings right here and a parking lot right there. Actually, in 2009, you can see right there that there was a parking lot planned for that location already and buildings and parking lots planned over there. So actually, we're not really changing much from 2009 in terms of impervious coverage and green space. The city reports, I just always am mindful of the city staff and helping us through, through these. They're very complimentary and we appreciate that tonight. They say the expansion will be a benefit to the city. The parking structure will help greatly with the parking gran, uh, demand and do it in an efficient way. And the traffic looked at this very closely. We have the traffic engineer with us tonight. No negative impacts are anticipated. This will result in probably an added left turn lane on the west end on, as west travel hits to 36 Avenue once it comes see, but that's really it. Finally, just in summary, again, to keep within the time. In summary, this is really just a minor PUD modification primarily for the site plan. We have to modify the site plan so that we can build it indifferent to the 2009 PUD. We need parking garage design standards that weren't really contemplated before as far as the spacing and sizing of, of parking spaces in a garage. Surfing parking lots are going to meet the city Norman code. And signage, there is a significant signage package to this tonight. We don't have graphics for you on this at that time because signage really comes later, but we wanted to make sure that we had a robust signage package. I recall from one of the meetings, one of the executives of the hospital said, and it's really unfortunate or tragic, is that not a day goes by before that, when they don't hear about how inadequate the signage is on this campus. And that's not a criticism, but it's a moment of correction. It's a moment of opportunity for us to fix that tonight. Because people come to this complex in distress. They come here sick, they come here injured, they come here in very dangerous, chaotic, distressed situations. Signage in locations like this cannot be any more important than it is in any other location. It's been difficult with the signage code we have in Norman right now. It's not really contemplated for large sites like this. And so this PUD will finally fix that and provide a signage code that we can work with in, in good fashion here. And no changes to allowable uses, really no changes to a lot of the things that we usually talk about in these council meetings. None of that is being changed here. Plan Commission unanimous approval, no protests that we're aware of. We've not had a call of any negative fashion on this at all. And nobody appeared to speak at Plan Commission at any time. So with that, Madam Mayor, we turn it back to you. We're happy to answer any questions you have, and we thank you very much for the opportunity tonight.
All right. Well, thank you for joining us. Are there any questions from council regarding this item?
Councilmember Peacock.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I really appreciate you guys' presentation. It's very much an exciting project. So looking forward to getting to vote on it tonight. You touched briefly on the impervious surface. Could you kind of speak a little more in depth about how this new design impacts the existing stormwater solutions on the site?
I would be happy to, councilmember. I'm going to bring in Terry Haynes, SMC engineers. And when I do, I'm going to bring up that drawing if that's okay with you, councilman.
Thank you, Sean. Terry Haynes with SMC Consulting Engineers. We're at 815 West Main Street in Oklahoma City. And I'm proud to be here to represent Norman Regional with the expansion projects and, and also to continue SMC's legacy as a hospital civil engineer. But we spent some time on this project since the mid 2000s with the original concept, the original plan and development for the overall area. Now, this particular location has two distinct detention ponds built into the campus. One of which you see there just to the lower left of the hospital complex in blue is a wet pond and it serves as detention for the hospital property just to the southwest of the buildings. It's also in its own nature, an LID, and that's a low, low, low impact development feature. The water that is surrounding, let's see if I can graphically show or annotate. The, the water that enters into this pond is basically from this area of the hospital. Of which this area is the main delivery and maintenance and, and mechanical, electrical generator equipment area. All of that runs into this wet pond. And as an LID, low impact development feature, any sediments that would be picked up in this park in these areas would, would be allowed to settle out. And the water evaporates, which is a feature of an LID. Or it's then conveyed by, through the stormwater conveyance system to the primary detention pond, which is located here in the northeast corner. This main detention pond is a dry detention pond. It, it actually serves over 102 acres of the, of developed land, including properties to the west, properties to the south, draining up through the, the, the hospital complex into the dry detention. As it turns out, back in the mid 2000s and when this hospital was built, LID was not a common household name. But the way that the pond was designed, it's a flat feature. It has a lot of green space. It has an outlet located right here with a built-in weir that is, is a stand-up weir. It's higher in elevation than the surrounding grade. And that serves also as an LID in that it, it stops the water from the first rainfall event, the first 10 minutes with the first flush, which is a critical time in a stormwater quality system. Where the water from cars and parking lots is conveyed, it can then, it is allowed to stand in the, in the detention pond. You could even see the result of it out there because we do have, if you drive by there, you'll see that there's sediment that is, that's landed in here. So it is in itself already built up as a, as a water quality system, which is a pure function of an LID. And then to answer your specific question, Councilmember Peacock, we, we've evaluated the overall pervious and impervious area. And given that the vertical construction of the parking lot is integrated into the design, it allows us to, to increase the pervious area or the green space area around the campus. We've calculated that we'll be sitting at, we're just above 35% when the, when the complex is completed.
Terry, you might add, if you will, I remember a meeting you, you sent a, a statement out to us that really kind of surprised us that you said it's covered by 35% impervious, but actually these ponds and detention can, can accommodate how much percentage if it was covered to?
Well, it, it can, we designed it for city standards, engineering standards to, to, to detain for a developed property up to 90%. 85 to 90% is typical. In this case, and, and again, this detention pond is not only designed for the campus, but it's also for these outlying areas that drain through the campus as well, which probably will have a higher than 65% buildout. But the pond itself is, is considered, it considers 85 to 90% a full buildout within the watershed area.
So basically a safety factor of about 20% coverage.
That's right. Now, the water that is released from the pond, it, it runs into a tributary that is part of the Lake Thunderbird watershed. It does not go into the Hakey Creek. Excuse me. It doesn't go into the, uh,
Brooklyn.
Yep. Excuse me, Sean.
The Brookhaven Creek.
Brookhaven Creek. Yes, yes. I'm sorry. I lost my train of thought there. It does not go into the Brookhaven Creek. It, it runs into a tributary of the Lake Thunderbird watershed.
Okay. I certainly appreciate that answer and I definitely appreciate the, the attention to low impact development and, you know, really calling out that first flush, that 10, first 10 minutes in the runoff. Capturing that is extremely important. So kudos to you guys on that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Petron. Well, Councilmember Peacock's questions really on the stormwater side of it captured. I had wanted to know, especially with respect to the Lake Thunderbird watershed rather than Brookhaven Creek. Mr. Rieger had knew that was coming. And and I should just start by saying that it's a beautiful project and I'm really excited about it. So I'm applaud you all. Recently in Oklahoma legislative news, we've been hearing about that there's a bill going before State House, I think it's a I can't remember which representative was introducing it, but it has to do with tornado signage in motel and hotel rooms. And I have a personal story with respect to a family member that had to in Okema, Oklahoma, but rushed to my house during a storm event and they were out in Healthplex. And I just wondered, you don't have to answer any questions about it or anything like that, but I would just encourage that when we, knowing how many guests come from out of town to visit your excellent healers, that maybe we would give them some direction on where to go should there be a storm event. I don't know. I couldn't really tell from the documents whether or not the little green spaces in the parking lot. I'm hoping those were trees to provide some shade. Love those knots. Great. And just, I would also encourage that, just like you have the kind of area of respite, as you referred to it, Mr. Split. Inside that there would be some sitting areas outside because as Mr. Rieger touched on, a lot of times people are really needing some outside air and some moments of zen to collect their thoughts or going through some very difficult times visiting family members. And so with that beautiful area that you have, I would just encourage to put some places that people can go and have a moment away, as well as maybe a little bit of playground equipment for children so that you can get the wiggles out as a parent. I think it's a beautiful project. I'm really excited about it. Maybe you could find somebody that was born in the Norman Regional Hospital 75 years ago. And after 75-year celebration, you can have them attend and hear their life story as well.
Thank you, councilmember. Let me address a couple of those items. Trees, yes. In fact, one of the minor PUD revisions is to make sure our landscaping requirements fit the Norman code ordinances right now. And so there's a specific provision in there that makes sure we fit. The parking lots have to have trees around them and islands as well. So yes, that's by code. And we brought it back to the city of Norman codes that we matched that. Before it was a little ambiguous what it did cover, but we wanted to make sure it matched the code.
Secondly, removal in 2009. I wondered what that was about for.
Correct. We brought it back into the code, basically. We wanted to make it that we're going back to the code. I would just say, I don't think there's anybody more mindful of tornado protection than the Norman Regional Hospital. From what they experienced at the Moore Hospital and the massive tornado that went through Moore, it was a devastating event. And I think nobody will, will remember that better than, than the Norman Regional staff. And I know for certain that they are watching it. They are considering that very closely as they progress in this. There are multiple basements in these projects. There already is a basement. The new buildings also have basements at several, several locations. So I have no doubt they will be very mindful of that. Thank you, councilman.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes, thank you for going through the stormwater management plan and also the landscaping plan. You've really hit on the high points of the things that I wanted to pursue a little bit farther. I am just curious about one, one aspect of the PUD. You did add language that there would be no maximum building heights for the buildings within the campus. And I was just curious as to why, you know, what, what the vision is for the future to not want to limit the building height.
Thank you, councilman. Have you addressed that? The, I probably should have addressed that. The, I probably should have mentioned. Don't know why I'm echoing all of a sudden here. I don't know why. Okay, there we go. So, okay, to talk about the height, yes. So I should have mentioned, actually, this project is a little bit unique in that we don't often have design overlays in areas of town. We do in some areas of town, center city code, which you're very familiar with, Councilmember Hall. This one actually does have design guidelines with it that were adopted back in 2009. And so those design guidelines actually have specifics as to height, but they're specific to the buildings back then. We basically had a decision point where we could go in, modify the design guidelines. We didn't want to do that. So we decided to clarify in the PUD and override only what we put in the PUD to override the design guidelines, which is, as I mentioned earlier, that landscape provision to take it back to the code. As to height, we could go in and put specific heights on these buildings. We didn't want to do that yet. Something I always want to be mindful of with council members is realize we can only go as tall as our parking will allow us to go. And that always caps us. Secondly, on this site, actually, we are going to be capped by airport regulations. In fact, we've already applied for FAA approval as to height, but they will not let us go unlimited, of course. So I always suggest it's really a design flexibility standard for us to have unlimited height, but really don't ever consider it as unlimited height. It's not. Particularly here with FAA and with parking requirements. I hope that answers your question. Hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. Thank you. I was just curious.
Seeing no other comments, Mayor.
Thank you. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments. Are there any public comments?
Seeing none.
All right. This is an opportunity for members of the pub, or I'm sorry, council to make final comments. Are there any final comments?
Seeing none.
All right. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Veerman.
Aye.
Councilmember McGarry.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall. Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon second reading unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman.
Aye.
Councilmember McGary.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon final reading unanimously.
Thank you. Item 28, preliminary plot for a replat of N R H Medical Park West, Section 2, a planned unit development generally located at the southwest corner of West Tecumseh Road and North Interstate Drive. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plot.
Don't move.
Move.
Thank you. This is the companion item to the previous item. Are there any further questions or comments from council regarding this item?
Seeing none.
Any public comments regarding this item?
Seeing none.
Thank you. Okay, are there any final comments from council regarding this item?
Once again, seeing none.
The motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plot. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman.
Aye.
Councilmember McGary.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The preliminary plot is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Item 29, ordinance 2021-36 upon first, second, and final reading to extend the previously adopted sunset date related to COVID-19 regulations from March 1, 2021 to June 1, 2021 and declaring an emergency. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on first reading by title.
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on first reading by title. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman.
Aye.
Councilmember McGary.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman. Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon first reading unanimously.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Don't move. Second.
Second.
I'd like to recognize our city attorney, Catherine Walker, to make a presentation.
Thank you. Fairly brief, you'll all recall the ordinance that you adopted back in July that set forth both the requirement for face coverings and some capacity restrictions in restaurant and bar areas. That had a sunset date originally, a sunset date originally, I think in November. That was extended in November to March 1st and the ordinance before you tonight would extend those provisions to June 1st. The thinking here being that although our numbers are improving, we know we have graduations in May, holiday in May, and so June 1st is probably a good time to look at these numbers again before deciding whether or not to continue those provisions.
I'd also add, my concern has been the variants. We know that they are spreading through Europe and some areas and if we learned anything from how it spread previously, it's just a matter of time to see how it plays out here. But I have invited Dr. Gary Rasco to join us tonight to give us any input and advice that he might have. So I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Rasco.
Thank you, Mayor Clark, really happy to answer any questions you have, but I think the, the key point is that, you know, everybody is very encouraged by the progress we're making now. We've seen decline in cases recently and we're getting more effective and a greater, you know, distribution of vaccine. But we're not at a place yet where we can relax these restrictions because we're not yet at, at the necessary herd immunity. We need to continue that to get, work through the phased approach to vaccination. And, you know, the, there's no question now from the scientific data that accumulated over the last year that, that these measures are effective, particularly masking, but also the other measures are critical. And we know that they do really markedly reduce community spread. So it's really critical that we, in order to continue the progress, get, you know, back to a level while we continue to get, you know, the broad population vaccinated. You maintain these measures to keep this downward trend and to suppress the community transmission of the virus. So that you'll then be able to see light at the end of the tunnel and progressing to more opening and more return to the kind of lifestyle that, that everybody wanted. So we're, we're close but not there yet, we're progressing well. Now's not the time to relax on that or we see likely important uptick in cases. And as Mayor pointed out, we do need a bit of time to hurt out precisely the details regarding the variant strains, particularly related to whether they're transmissible as well as whether they're more serious in terms of lethality and other things. And so you, you would not want, by relaxing these things, of, of one of those as well. We also need to, a bit of time to learn, learn in really, you know, definitive way how effective the vaccine is at these various strains as well and whether boosters will be needed and all of those things. So I think that it's really encouraging the progress is made. I commend the leadership in council for, you know, taking the measures you did because it's no question in my mind as epidemiologist that had we not had these measures, particularly the mask ordinances in place in, in Norman, in Oklahoma City, Tulsa County, and some other places, we would have been in an even much worse situation in the state. As you know, at peak, we came just up to almost exhausting the state capacity for intensive care beds and we're luckily that it pulled back. But they have been crucial and so I would say, yes, the course. And let's continue to work together to get people vaccinated and continue to follow these measures and suppress this viral transmission down to levels that then allow a more return to the kind of pre-COVID situation. But we're not quite there yet, so happy to.
Okay, and Dr. Rasco, I also wanted to share, if it's all right, Brenda, some slides that Dr. Bratzler had put together for me tonight. So as you'll see with the national ranking, sometimes it's not always great to be a top 10 state and we are not a top 10 state. As you can see, for the bottom there, Oklahoma is at 103 daily new cases per 100,000 on January 12th and we are now down to number 19 in the nation at 20 new cases. Seven day rolling average, in case you haven't seen that in a while, definitely encouraging. Notice it's somewhat leveling out with that rolling average. And then you'll see that Oklahoma County is actually doing better than Cleveland County. There's by color. And then here's our rolling average, slight uptick, but I'm feeling comfortable with this. Norman confirmed cases, and there is a difference, which, here's the zip codes. COVID test done per week, percent positive.
And Mayor, we really want to drive that percent positive down a bit further, well, 5% for sure, down a little bit further, so.
And hospitalizations, as Dr. Rasco touched on, I know Norman Regional was getting quite full there for a while along with our other hospitals. But this is one of my favorite slides. I had heard one of our state legislators actually last week point out that the measures we put in place would, in hindsight, be seen as, as not effective and not necessary. But as you can see, the red line is the city of Norman, the blue line is Cleveland County minus Norman, and then there's Cleveland County total. And it does make a difference, the, the data proves it. And you can also see in the September area where our students returned, and I have said many times that college towns have a unique challenge. And so we certainly, in my opinion, need to keep these in place while our, our students are here. And I appreciate you being here with us today, Dr. Rasco. Are there any questions from anyone on council regarding this item?
Councilmember Holman.
I appreciate Dr. Rasco coming on here with us today, giving us an update. I would mention for everyone that on Friday mornings at around 9:00 a.m., it might be a little bit after, Dr. Bratzler goes on Sports Talk 99.3 FM or 1400 AM with Chris Plank and Josh Helmer, so in the morning. So he gives an update about 10 minutes or so, they ask some questions and he gives a weekly update on the radio. So I encourage everybody to check that out. Great to see these numbers going down and I hope that next time we won't, we will, that we will be in a position to not have to extend this mandate any further, hopefully, so we'll see, thanks.
I'm seeing no other, oh, wait a minute, Councilmember Petron.
Thank you, Dr. Rasco, I just had a quick question for continuity of jurisdiction purposes, whether or not you have an idea whether OU was going to keep theirs in place as well?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And then you think the winter storm, can we rely on these numbers such that, you know, when everybody gets back out of their houses, starting with the weather warming back up, is it that reflection of the winter storm and people being home? Or is it truly a reflection of the vaccine starting to?
I think, I think it's a, it's a reflection of, of increasing acquired immunity in the community, right? So first of all, there's a lot of people who've been infected. And we now have data on, you know, that is immunity, you know, really important antibody levels and things for at least about six months after you've been infected and maybe longer. And so, so there is some emerging information. So as more people were infected, that's one level of immunity. And then we add on to that vaccination, which is the better way to get to herd immunity. And, you know, but we need to get to a level of at least probably 70% of vaccinated people in the community, although Dr. Fauci has said recently he believes it may be higher and we also don't know how that might be impacted by new strains and the virus mutating. So what also is key that I didn't mention, and I appreciate your questions, remind me to, we really are in a race against the virus. The virus will change and mutate as time goes along. And what we want to try and, and the more of the, that we give it to replicate and transmit and move in the community, the faster and more likely you're going to see patients develop that, that could be very important in terms of either their infectiveness or their seriousness of causing clinical disease. And so what we want to do is we want to use our non-pharmacologic measures to push down asking, social distancing, the various other things that you're doing to push down the community transmission rates as far down as we can while we vaccinate people to bring immunity up. And that is what, that is key, they work in tandem, that's the most important, important factor, so.
Well, I know that you've probably scarcely slept over the past year and I appreciate your efforts and all of your teammates as well.
It's, it's a great team, but thank you for, you know, your counsel again because the, these, these measures have been crucial.
Councilmember Nash.
Yeah, I was wondering if you could explain to me real quick just the value of the, the percent positive metric?
Yeah, so the percent positive metric just reflects of people being tested, how many, you know, turn out to be confirmed and are positive. And when that measure is going down at the same time as cases are going down, that's a great indication that we're bringing things under control. If the percent positive is rising faster as, as the number of cases is rising with keeping the same level of testing, that indicates the virus is spreading in the community, right? So, you know, the, earlier on, we heard the debate about, well, we have more cases because we test more people. No, that, that wasn't the case because we, for many weeks, had approximately similar level, similar levels of testing in Oklahoma, but we were getting more and more cases and positive rates. So we watched percent positive together with cases going up or down as a marker of whether we're getting stronger or weaker spread of the virus in the community. Hope that, that's clear.
Okay, so the percent positive along with the differential cases over some period of time, that makes a little bit more sense. Percent positive by itself, it seems like it'd be, it could be deluded by so many different compound, confounding variables that, and it seemed kind of useless to me at first glance. Because I mean, we were probably doing very well right before Thanksgiving when everybody was going and getting tested so that you'd travel, for example. Allergies going up would send people out to get tested, which could give the impression that we're doing well if looking at the percent positive just by itself. But yeah, that makes a lot more sense as we take into account with the differential cases. Thank you.
And Councilmember McGary. You're still muted, Councilmember.
I just want to add a word more along the lines of public health comment that will hopefully support what the doctor has said. You know, around town on my bike, I, I feel increasingly comfortable about the level of masking amongst individuals in our community. That's a really good sign. I do believe we have to work though increasingly with our partners at OU. I'm on campus every day and today was a good example where there were lots of masks off and people walking around a campus that has a mask mandate and not observing the mandate and then leaving campus and going out into campus corner. So I think that we need to explore options about how to work with our partners at OU to continue to make the student population more aware because I was, I'm still on campus, but I got on, I got on campus at 8 o'clock, haven't left, went out for lunch and pretty much every, on all the ovals, there was a lot of just not respecting the mask mandate.
Thank you, I'll feed that back right away and internally some steps, thanks.
And Councilmember Nash.
As Councilmember McGary brought up a good point about masks, at least the mask mandate being adhered to outside. Yeah, masks inside makes a lot of intuitive sense. What about masks outside? Dude, I don't know, what's your opinion on, on wearing masks outdoors?
So, so outdoors is much less risky if you're not in close proximity of the, of other people. So the real issue is, is whether you're, you know, in a close group. So if, you know, having prolonged contact with a group of people, you know, not six feet apart or right close up, talking to them and so on, you should have a mask. If you're walking by yourself or jogging by yourself and not going to come within six or 10 feet of people outside, that's, that's not really. six or 10 feet of people outside, that's that's not really then, you know, such an issue. But I think what Councilmember Gary was probably referring to were groups of students walking together. I've I've seen it myself as well. And then certainly congregating on campus corner together, you know, in groups on the sidewalk or other things that that is is still, that's not as risky as being inside in a, you know, not well ventilated, enclosed, small room, but it's still not okay to, just because you're outside, you know, having, you know, the closeness of a bunch of of people together in a crowded space, say, on the sidewalk outside a bar or restaurant. So it's really about, that's where the social distancing comes into, right? But it's really about close proximity for periods of time where the opportunity to transmit these aerosol droplets and respiratory droplets occurs.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not seeing any other hands, Mayor.
This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments. Are there any public comments?
Seeing none.
Are there any final comments from council regarding this item?
Once again, seeing none.
I think my only comment would be thank you to Emmy in the Cleveland County Health Department, OU Health Services for that extraordinary 10,000 vaccine pod that we had on Monday. I hope we can have more. I I was Facebook feed was filled with very happy people and stories of now I can go hug someone and it was lovely. Teachers aren't scared to be in the classroom and it was very nice to see that. So as we continue to move along in the phases, I encourage you all to get vaccinated if you are physically able to do so. All right. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman.
Aye.
Councilmember McGary.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman. Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon second reading unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to approve or reject emergency section two.
So moved. Second.
Motion on the floor is to approve emergency section two. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman.
Aye.
Councilmember McGary.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The emergency section is approved unanimously.
And now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
So moved.
All right. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman.
Aye.
Councilmember McGary.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted on final reading unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Raskov, for joining us tonight. I feel like tonight was an all around healthcare win for Norman with all of the things that we addressed. Now on to item 29, a miscellaneous discussion. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council only. Remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less.
No public comments.
All right. As I mentioned earlier, we will next meeting be moving council announcements to the beginning of the meeting, but if you all have any announcements now, let's start with word one.
I have no announcements, just want to say welcome to Councilmember McGary, say we're going to miss you, Councilmember Carter, and congratulations to Councilmember Holman, who returns again. And congratulations to Brandy Studley, who will be taking over for me in word one. Have a good evening, y'all. I'm tired. I'm still digging out after the ice storm. I got a lot to catch up on, so announcements next time.
I'm going to go ahead and excuse Councilmember Foreman. She has an emergency that she needs to leave for. Thank you for joining us tonight. If you have any quick announcements and you're able to text me, I happily give them for you. Good night. Thank you, Councilmember Bierman. Councilmember McGary.
I do not have anything to report from word two this week, although I'm sure that next week I most likely will. And I want to say thank you to everyone for the very warm welcome, and I really do look forward to working with you to make Norman a better community.
Thank you, Councilmember. I look forward to working with you as well. Councilor Petron.
Well, I would just like to give a shout out to all of our department heads for working so hard over these past 10 days of a truly where there's a herculean effort on all of your parts, and we are just grateful for you. It was a dangerous event and I'm just really impressed. Our neighboring communities weren't nearly, I want to say as prepared, but they they didn't weather the storm as well as Norman did. And so we have a lot to be proud of here. And I want to thank the city manager for being accessible to us. We've probably been texting him at all hours of the night, asking questions on behalf of our residents, and I'm grateful for getting those answers. So we could communicate well with our residents. And Councilmember Carter, thank you for your service to board two in the city of Norman. Councilmember McGary, look forward to getting to know you better and working with you. That's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to echo what Councilmember Petron said. Next time you see a city worker, please stop and say thank you. It was a really an amazing effort with challenges thrown at them minute by minute, I would probably venture to say. So I'm so appreciative of our city staff and our emergency responders who assisted so many people that were either stuck in a in the snow or needed assistance or line maintenance that went out and helped people turn off their water. And just appreciate the effort of the unsung employees that this is what they do. This is what they do every single day. But last week they were doing it 24/7. So so grateful for everything that they did for our city and for all our neighbors. And also just wanted to say thank you to Joe Carter for being willing to step up and fill in these last couple of months. And again, welcome to Councilmember McGary, looking forward to working with you as we move forward for the rest of this year. And as to word four, I also just wanted to basically throw out that I think we've all been really trying to figure out how to do award meetings in a time that's really kind of hard to do that. But one of the things I really enjoy doing on Martin Luther King Day was a park cleanup in one of the Ward Four parks. And it was a great opportunity to get together safely with a few neighbors in that park. And so I am going to move forward that idea. And over the next six or eight weeks, I'm going to be meeting at all of the Ward Four neighborhood parks. There's a lot of little ones to do a neighborhood cleanup and also have an opportunity for a neighborhood meeting of anybody who wants to get out. And I think this is a safe way to go about doing it and look forward to really getting to visit with people. So I'll be announcing that in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Nash.
Like to say, congratulations to new Councilmember McGary. And Carter's going to be missed. Then congratulations to Councilmember Holman for winning reelection again. And Brandy Studley for for winning the election for Ward One. And for to Richard Tortorello, I'm sure he's going to do a decent job representing Ward Five. That's that's about it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilforeman, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I wanted to recognize Ward Seven resident Sage Malden for becoming the new chair of the Human Rights Commission and carrying on the torch of Ward Seven residents being the chair of that commission that Kay Ham used to be. And so very proud of that. I think I have three residents on that committee, which would be the most representation Ward Seven has on any committee, actually. So I'm very proud of that for our ward and for Norman. And I know he'll do a wonderful job in that role. I also would recognize and thank our city staff for their work. They do all the time, but especially recently with the weather and events like that, it's very difficult. And with the specific event that we had involving the water treatment plants and the fact that we never had to really lose water, we just had to encourage people to conserve for a little bit, and they were able to get it fixed very quickly and and back online without really much of a problem. So to the consumers anyway. And so that is really appreciative appreciative. For me, I've had several residents in Ward Seven that have commented on social media, wondering how they can how they can thank the staff at the treatment plant or the staff that worked on fixing the problem. I directed them, they said they could email the council, like an email city manager pile, and we'll make sure that staff hears hears those words of encouragement from the residents. So I also want to thank Councilmember Carter for coming back and agreeing to serve in that position for a little bit longer, especially during the difficult times that we're dealing with. You know, you think you're retired and walked away from it, and then a couple of months later, we we need you to come back and fill that role for a little bit longer. So I appreciate him doing that. And I'm looking forward to working with Councilmember McGary going forward. Parts of Ward Seven and Ward Two border each other, and we have some similar issues to deal with. And so definitely looking forward to that. I'm looking forward to resuming committee meetings, specifically the CPT Committee, which I chair. This council job, basically for the last couple of months, I mean, we do phone calls and do our homework and meet with people, but in our official capacity, we've really just been showing up every two weeks and casting votes. We've not been able to really advance or work on any new policy since October. And that's really, I mean, this job is all about working on policy, how to improve policy, how to create new policy to address issues that have come up. And not having committee meetings really has ground everything to a halt in that regard. So I'm really looking forward to getting those back going and getting some of these, our backlog of agenda items moving again. And then lastly, yeah, I want to thank all the well, the new council members that will be getting sworn in in July, but they got elected two weeks ago. And and thank the residents and voters of Ward Seven for sending me back back to City Hall for another two years to keep being your voice up there on the dais. So I'm looking forward to it. I've got a lot of work to do. It's not going to be easy, but I'm very confident in the group that we have that will that we'll be able to to tackle them with some efficiency. So thank you all. See you next time.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilor Peacock.
Thanks. This is why I don't like going after Holman, because he always takes my takes my thoughts. I was actually going to comment on the resumption of our committee meetings as well. I'm really looking forward to getting those back going. I know personally, I have several initiatives that I want to bring to the Community Planning and Transportation Committee. So really excited to to see that start moving along again. And to anybody out there watching, if you've got got any ideas or any things that you'd like to see come in front of those committees, please don't don't hesitate to send them over. We'd love to turn over every rock. So. Lastly, obviously, welcome Councilmember McGary and thank you to Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Councilmember. I second all of these amazing thoughts. We have the best staff in the state, if not the nation. We proved it yet again. And in case you weren't counting, that was our third weather emergency federal declaration in seven months. And then if you add in the public health emergency declaration, we've had four in less than a year. So it has been a year in Norman, Oklahoma, with a price tag for the weather emergencies of $7.5 million and counting. Yes, that does not include any federal reimbursement, but man, it has been a tough year, and our staff continues to work incredibly hard, and I am very, very grateful and lucky to be in the city of Norman. Again, congratulations to those that were successful in elections and to those that weren't, thank you. It's a weird time to run, and you did it. And I emailed everyone and encouraged them to apply for boards and commissions, and some already have. So I am encouraged to see that. I also want to remind you to shop local. Tonight was a budget night, and we know how much we rely on sales tax. So make an effort. There you go, Anthony. That's right. He didn't even ask me to do that. But shop local, shop local, and then shop local some more. And finally, I mentioned the event on Monday, March 8th, for the Women Perspectives to celebrate Women's International History Day. But I'm also having my first move with the mayor this Saturday at the 12th Avenue Rec Center. Pickleball. Bring your masks, bring some water, be prepared to work up a sweat, because I have actually played before. The Norman or the Greater Oklahoma City Pickleball Club is going to walk us through it. The goal of this program is, again, to show you all of the great facilities we have right here in Norman, but also to encourage you to be fit. As we've seen, unfortunately, COVID-19 has really highlighted that obesity and other comorbidities have increased the seriousness of the impact of that disease. So please join us. It'll be a good time. You can learn a new sport and check out the 12th Avenue Rec Center if you haven't been there in a while. So see you at 9:00 AM on Saturday. With that, this meeting is adjourned.